This is the Wednesday, August 25th, 2021. Meeting of the 2022 budget. It's our third evening. And will the clerk please call the roll?
Absolutely. Councilmember Rallo?
I'm here.
Volin?
Here.
Rosenberger? Scambalory?
Here.
Sims?
Here.
Flaherty?
Here.
Piedmont Smith?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
And Sandberg?
Here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Bolden. So this evening we'll have reports from the Bloomington Housing Authority, Housing and Neighborhood Development, Economic and Sustainable Development Office, Community and Family Resources, Parks and Recreation, and the City Clerk's Budget. And we'll continue with our format of questions after presentations of three minutes, of three rounds of three-minute questions. Before we go to the public, which will allow two minutes per speaker, we'll come back to the council for a three-minute comment period. So with that, we'll go to the Bloomington Housing Authority for the first presentation. Who is presenting that this evening?
I am Amber Scobie.
Amber Scobie, very good. Ms. Scobie, would you proceed?
Yes. And I'm sharing my screen. Okay. So, good evening. I'm Amber Scobie, the Executive Director of the Bloomington Housing Authority, and excited to present our fiscal year 2022 budget. Just a reminder of the mission, the Housing Authority exists to strengthen opportunity beginning but not ending with housing. Yes, we provide affordable housing programs, but also a lot of supportive services and partnerships within the community for our residents. Also note, a majority of our funding comes from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. So I'll talk a little bit about that with the budget and also some ways that we're diversifying our revenue in the future. A quick snapshot of our portfolio. So we have public housing. Right now, it's the Crestmont community. It's 196 units. In the future, we will have, near future, two months or so, we'll have a separate owner budget and the fiscal year will be the calendar year next year. So when we get to the public housing portion, you'll see that the numbers are much lower than previously because it's been prorated just to be two months out of the fiscal year. We also operate some RAD project-based voucher units at Reverend Butler in Walnut Woods. This is a separate ownership entity and a separate budget and fiscal year. Those are 116 units. We have 1,284 Housing Choice vouchers. We help with a single-room occupancy program in partnership with Centerstone. That is 12 units. We doubled the size of our project-based vouchers this last year to 91. Veterans Affairs Supportive Housing, we have 80 vouchers, 28 new emergency housing vouchers and/or supportive services and self-sufficiency. We have 80 participants in our family self-sufficiency, a homeownership program with 12 homeowners, and about 99 households in our Resident Opportunity and Self-Sufficiency Program. Also a reminder, we have a Head Start facility at Walnut Woods and our active community building here in Crestmont. So some quick highlights from this last year, and you'll see some of this builds on our goals for this next fiscal year. We increased our Housing Choice voucher, housing assistance payments by $550,000. Most of this was thanks to the CARES Act. And we also had some increased expenses, of course. Some of our clients had lost income or their jobs temporarily due to pandemic, but we were able to get some CARES Act money for that. We added 28 emergency housing vouchers to our portfolio. I mentioned earlier doubling our project-based vouchers. There were some new buildings that came online, some of which have project-based vouchers as part of them. We began pre-development activities for the Crestmont Rental Assistance Demonstration Program. This week, we'll finalize implementation of a new paperless software system. We installed site lighting and 30 security cameras in Crestmont. We turned over the natural gas line operation in Crestmont over to Vectren and Centerpoint. It was our first year with the Low-Income Housing Tax Credit Compliance Work for Reverend Butler in Walnut Woods, and we were successful and had a good audit. We attended the Indiana Supportive Housing Institute with Centerstone, and 29% of the construction dollars that we spent renovating Reverend Butler in Walnut Woods went to Section 3 businesses or women minority business enterprises. Okay, there's a typo on this one. It should be our fiscal year 2022 budget goals. And those are, we're shifting from a public housing asset management to operating our properties under the RAD model and Low-Income Housing Tax Credit, which basically is sort of streamlining some of the operations, different fiscal years, et cetera. So that will be a priority. We want to increase success of our voucher holders in our Section 8 program, and we're doing that through initiatives like a landlord risk mitigation fund, also prioritizing the lease-up and success of those emergency housing vouchers, which are designated for those experiencing homelessness from the coordinated entry-lead list. We want to continue to increase our real estate development capacity at the Housing Authority and through our nonprofit development arm, Summit Hill Community Development Corporation. And we want to focus on efforts that build residents and community partners empowerment for community-wide safety and youth engagement. Okay, so we'll start with the public housing budget. That's made up of rents collected and also operating subsidy. We also receive a few other grants for resident services. Reminder, this is just two months out of the fiscal year because we are preparing to convert Crestmont through the RAD program, which will then have a calendar year fiscal year and a different budget, given all of those influx of money for the renovation and ongoing operations. So I will also note this shows a vacancy loss that's pretty high. We are holding some units vacant into the next few months in order to prepare for those renovations. So yes, quite a significant loss in some rental income. But the largest, as you see, the operating subsidy from HUD at $142,000. So in total, rental and operating income is about $217,000. And expenses, again, administrative for staffing, tenant services, utilities, maintenance operations, insurance, and some collection losses. And total expenses about $215,000. This is the Housing Choice Voucher Section 8 budget. This is by far our largest in terms of dollar amount. It's also a huge economic boost to property owners that are receiving these housing assistance payments on behalf of the families that we serve. I mentioned we are seeing about half a million dollar increase in housing assistance payments, estimating about $9.2 million going into this next fiscal year. We have funding for our family self-sufficiency program. Another large chunk of income is administrative fees that helps to fund staffing costs, benefits, office overhead, supplies, those types of things. That's $776,000. You'll see some income for the Landlord Risk Mitigation Program, about $75,000 to match an existing $75,000 that we have in a fund. And other miscellaneous fraud recovery is money that we get back from tenants who may owe. So total income, about $10.2 million. And expenses, we pretty much expense out all of the HAP payments. Income equals expenses. We do expect to spend all of that. Administrative is $824,000, of which there are some expenses in the Landlord Risk Mitigation Fund. Our FSS program, insurance, those types of things. So pretty close for expenses equalling income. Expenses about $10,169,000. I've also put our single-room occupancy budget on here. Income equals expenses. Even what we don't spend, we have to reimburse HUD. All right, the Central Office Cost Center is the business unit of the Housing Authority. It earns its income from fees from all of the programs, public housing, RAD, the voucher program. So we also have some American Rescue Plan grants, about $375,000 here, thanks to about the $250,000 from supporting the efforts of our developments and community land trust establishing, and also some help with the Landlord Risk Mitigation Fund. So total operating income, $1.4 million. And expenses, again, administrative, we do some tenant services work. We really increased that by about $10,000 this year to help with some of the community safety and youth engagement initiatives. Utility office maintenance and insurance operating expenses, $977,472. And that's it for the brief budget overview. Happy to answer any questions. There's a lot of detail that goes into each of these budgets, but just a short amount of time to spend with you all this evening. But wanted to end with some pictures showing the renovation work in the units at Reverend Butler in Walnut Woods. I know we haven't been able to invite folks up to the site, but hopefully these pictures show you how that progress is going. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scobie. Appreciate that report, and we will now go to council questions. And thank you for ensuring your presentation. Are there council questions for this budget? And I'll remind council that we do not vote on this budget. They have their separate Board of Commissioners, but Ms. Scobie invites questions. So I see Councilmember Volin, would you like to begin?
Yes, please. Thank you. Ms. Scobie, thanks for the presentation as always, and glad to see the good work you're doing. Could you, I've got two questions. One is, could you define for, the one thing that was missing was, could you redefine for us the RAD model? What does RAD stand for? And, you know, what is the practical upshot and benefit of it?
Right, yes. The RAD program is a HUD program rental assistance demonstration. Essentially, it allows housing authorities to get access to private and public financing in order to complete the renovation work. So as a public housing community, there's a deed restriction on the property. I can't borrow any money, and I can't enter into any arrangements to do renovation work outside of the money that I get through the public housing program. The beauty of RAD is that it breaks those restrictions and it allows us to get financing like low-income housing tax credits, also take out a loan. We can also, you know, get money like home dollars, those types of things. So it's really, again, allowing agencies to access the capital of which we very much need. We, you know, have $30 million worth of renovation work planned for Crestmont. And of course, it's such a deep need in many of the units.
And so basically, this was the thing that broke the dam of the deed that, you know, you couldn't borrow off of it, and now the federal government lets you borrow off it despite the deed?
Yes, and also switching the way that it subsidized from public housing to the Section 8 funding. So each of the units will have a project-based voucher.
Okay, the other question I had was about the public housing budget, the operating subsidy. First of all, what's the source of that operating subsidy, the $142,000?
That comes from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development from HUD. It's calculated based on a formula. So we have to turn in, you know, the rents that we collect, but also our expenses for, you know, utilities and operating costs. There's a formula for that that gets calculated by HUD, and then they fund us on a monthly level for operating subsidy.
Well, I guess my question is not that, is that, is this a normal year? Or is this a much different subsidy because of COVID? Like, what was it like compared to two years ago?
It's about the same as two years ago.
Okay.
Yeah.
So there's no difference.
It didn't really impact it very much.
Okay, thanks so much.
Okay, moving on. By the way, we've deactivated the chime, or the warning gone, I should say. So please be mindful of the timer, and that goes for both the questioner and the presenter. And I'll warn folks if you go over time. So are there further questions from council? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Scobie, for your presentation. I was wondering, is HUD funding based on census figures at all?
You know, I don't think that our particular HUD funding for the Housing Choice voucher and the public housing program is based on that. Ours are kind of set by some appropriation standards that Congress has. I do think there are other HUD programs. I'm pretty sure that some of the homelessness services programs are based on census data, maybe even CDPG and Home. But of course, the HUD umbrella is large, and we are just one little part of that. So I don't think that our census numbers would impact some of our specific HUD funding at the Housing Authority.
Okay, thank you for that.
Further questions from council for the Bloomington Housing Authority budget? Ms. Scobie? Councilmember Smith?
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation, Ms. Scobie. That was great. Will you say a little bit about community land trust and how that works?
Okay. So the way that I think about how the Housing Authority and Summit Hill can contribute to community land trusts is, we already have a nonprofit development arm that's mission is to promote housing affordability in Monroe County. So one way that we already do land trust-type things is ground leases. So for Reverend Butler, the Housing Authority owns the land, and then the owner of the units, the tax credit investor and our nonprofits, pay a ground lease. And so that ground lease holds the land for permanent affordability and earns a little bit of income from those that own the buildings and improvements. There's also deed restrictions. A new way, and, you know, we're looking forward to partnering with the city on this, is some land that's already under city control or owns or will be, like the hospital site. A portion of that land can be owned by a community land trust, and then maybe a single-family home is built on some lots. The home is sold at a lower price because it doesn't include the land that's held within the land trust. And so that's one way to promote affordability, especially in a homeownership model. That's a really simplified explanation. But I also think there are some opportunities within the hospital site, for instance, to go back to that for apartments, so multifamily housing, that maybe the land stays for permanent affordability, 99-year restriction. And perhaps there's an opportunity for sort of a mixed income development to happen on that. So there's some affordability within the units, but we always know that the land for all the future Bloomington can be used for affordability purposes as well.
Is there a certain amount of funds that are attached to that activity with you?
Well, we did ask for some of the ARPA money, $250,000, but the goal is that there is some revenue generated from the community land trust that can kind of sustain the operations and the administrative management that it's going to take for the next several years.
Are there a certain number of units underneath it right now? Or is that, is it still being developed?
Still being developed, yeah. It's getting off the ground, yeah. Nothing existing currently.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Additional questions from council? Councilmember, Council President Sims?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, Ms. Scobie. And Kit may always take such great photos, so please give him our thanks on those apartment photos. Can you, I'm interested in discussing a little bit about the Section 3 and women and minority owned business contractors. And you reported 29% of the construction contract dollars for RAD have been awarded to those contractors. Two things, can you explain that program a little bit? And what was our goal at the beginning of this construction with regard to what we wanted to see from those contractors?
So initially, we had a goal of 25%, so we've exceeded that goal. And we set out to achieve that by going to community organizations, churches, to being on radio programs, to meeting with the Building Association, NAACP membership, all of that to kind of get the word out that we had this renovation work coming. And there are some opportunities for anyone that was in the construction trades, but also maybe someone had a cleaning company or a moving company, graphic design work, like all of that. So we, yeah, tried to have a lot of community meetings. There's also databases, the state has one, where if you're Section 3 or women minority business enterprise, you can register. So we scoured that list and reached out to a lot of folks as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the goal overall is that federal money, you know, goes to help support these types of businesses. They should be prioritized.
Okay, thank you. And I've had the pleasure of discussing with some of those business owners and some of your board members, and everyone's really happy with the success, and I think you get some credit for that, as do many others. Next, the Landlord Risk Mitigation Fund of $75,000. And we've got less than a minute, but can you quickly discuss that and how is that going?
Yes. So this year's budget asks for a match to an existing $75,000, so that pool of money is made available to some of our voucher clients. We hope to get this up and running in the next couple of months, but it would be, landlords could have access to that for any tenants that might meet some criteria. Perhaps they have a past eviction history or a poor credit score, you know, still working out the criteria on who's eligible. But it's basically another way to say, you know, we're providing some money just in case there's a non-payment of rent issue or damages. We'd also like to pair it with some tenant education as well.
Thank you. It was great timing. We're out of time. Thank you for your responses. Thank you.
Very good. Councilmember Scambalory?
Yes, thank you. Ms. Scobie, could you talk more about that? You talked about tenant education and resources. And in particular, can you share more about the family self-sufficiency in the ROS program?
Yes. So family self-sufficiency is for 80 participants on the voucher program. It's a jobs program, so the idea is that folks work to set goals towards gaining employment where there's, you know, eventually their income puts them at a level where they no longer need the Housing Choice voucher assistance. And the incentive for FSS is that there is a savings account established. So as once on the program, as their income increases, the amount of rent that they pay to the landlord also increases. Remember, there's that 30% of their income they pay in rent. So let's say at the beginning of their participation FSS, they pay $300 to their landlord, but they got a raise, and now their rent payment would be $400. The Housing Authority matches that $100 difference into a savings account. And at the end of five years, whatever's in that savings account is just, we write a check to the tenant. Sometimes it's a down payment for a house, reliable transportation, paying off college loans. But we've had some 20,000-plus graduates. But it's all about helping folks gain employment. And the ROS program, as far as public housing families, that's really designed to focus on quality of life, aging in place, housing stability services. We have a coordinator that helps meet families, you know, whatever the need might be.
Great. Thank you. That's very helpful. And I have a minute left. I was impressed on one of your first slides. You talked about participating in the Supportive Housing Institute. And Bloomington has welcomed several housing units of supportive housing, so Crawford, Kinzer Flats, most recently in the district I represent. I know that's a different operation, but could you talk about the relationship between BHA staff and the staff in those areas and how you might collaborate or work together on things?
Well, we participated because we wanted to develop integrated supportive housing, so a mix of maybe some voucher clients along with those who need permanent supportive housing, and also partnering with Centerstone on that. So the idea of doing that was that we became the developer and the property manager. But we do have connections, of course, with Crawford, Kinzer Flats. We have voucher participants in those properties and work with the management staff to help, you know, subsidize some of those units and work with some of their families that they serve.
Great, and that's my time. Thank you.
Good. Let's move on to any other questions from council. I'm seeing none. I see Councilmember Flaherty.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Scobie, for the presentation. I'll take this opportunity to follow up just a little bit about the community land trust idea as well and how that's going. A couple of questions. I guess first, I know the city and you all have engaged in seeking some advice from folks with high-level experience in operating land trusts. And I wanted to ask for kind of confirmation or clarification of the model we're pursuing, which is using the Summit Hill Development Corporation as a sort of existing nonprofit that's an instrumentality of the Housing Authority to set this up. Are there other models that use that same approach? And what do you, I know you mentioned kind of the potential to start up more quickly with a nonprofit that exists like that. So yeah, could you reference any other models or any pro-cons or what the trade-offs might be in that approach versus establishing its own nonprofit?
Well, I know there are models that work with, like, city nonprofits or other partnerships. I think I'm also really interested in that those living on properties in the community land trust govern the land trust themselves. So I think there's a little bit of a hybrid here where, you know, perhaps Summit Hill can help get this going, and then eventually they're actually governed and overseen by those living on the land trust property. But housing authorities and instrumentality, there are several models that do, you know, ground leases, affordability restrictions, and other kind of community land trust models. I'd be happy to put something together and send that to you. But I do think, you know, getting advice of a legal expert and, you know, there are other consulting companies that work with land trusts just to make sure it's a good fit and, yeah, to help weigh those pros and cons. Of course, you know, one of the cons is the Housing Authority isn't, you know, directly under the city's control. Like, it's, the board is appointed by the mayor, but it's sort of its own separate entity in some ways. But a pro is that, you know, we've already set up a nonprofit, and we have some of the staffing capacity to understand, you know, how this particular type of development works.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. I'll follow up with one more, if that's okay. Which is thinking a little bit about the long-term sustainability and operations of a land trust. I like very much the idea of the city donating land, whether leased or owned by the land trust at their hospital site. I know the Arlington and 17th Trinitas Development has been mentioned, where we're getting some R4 zone lots. And I'm sure there will be other opportunities over time. But I wanted to ask more so about the potential for cash support, especially early on in the process. On the one hand, I can sort of imagine that if you have the land, you can get, you can build the housing at cost and sell it at cost, which will still be much more affordable because people aren't paying for the land. And that's one way to do it. But are there, I also sort of assume that the flexibility of options and price ranges and all of that would, would be greater with some initial starting capital. Can you speak at all to that?
Yeah, I mean, there's sort of the admin staffing side, which could be a little bit of gap funding until the land trust is able to kind of sustain itself through fees and developer fees and such. But I think if you're talking about purchasing some land that eventually becomes a land trust, you know, that's a, it's expensive, right? There's going to be a, a large amount of money, I mean, millions of dollars potentially that would be needed for that. But right now, we're just really focusing on some of the setup in terms of deciding on the structure and the governance piece of it and the staffing piece of it until we can be self-sustaining. It should be two, three years.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, we've had a little timer problems, but I think those have been resolved. And so we're continuing on questions. I guess we're in second round now. If anyone would like to continue questioning. Council President Sims.
Thank you. Just one more thing I'd like to hear about. Ms. Scobie, you mentioned $11,166 of collection losses in the public housing budget. Can you just expound on that a bit? Is that non-payment of rents mainly? And are there any consequences for that? I guess, for lack of a better word.
Yes. So collection losses are non-payment of rent or damages to units after a move out that after six months, we label as most, you know, uncollectible, probably highly likely that we're not going to collect that. So of course, there's consequences for non-payment of rents. You know, that could be an eviction. Right now, we have the eviction moratorium. But if you don't pay your rents, then we try to set up a payment plan or kind of figure out if there needs to be a rent adjustment. But in some cases, that could mean an eviction and tenant damages. Sometimes after a move out, those get recorded. And the consequence is that you have to pay that back before you'd be eligible for any of our programs again. So we write them off of our books because HUD actually scores us on our tenant rents collected. And if we show a lot of losses, it messes up that collection verse what we charge versus what we collect, that ratio. And it minimizes the score. So that's why it's on the budget. We, we write it off the books.
Okay. And I know you're in the process of changing how you budget, at least fiscal year. But this reported collection losses, where does that fit in past years? Is it higher, lower, about normal?
It's two months worth of what we would typically write off. I think I actually put two months worth and then a little bit more because I was expecting, you know, perhaps there's some last minute write offs that are needed before we convert. But it's a detriment. It's a, it's a good amount of money, maybe 60 to 80,000 that we write off.
Okay, so I was going to suggest maybe more like 60, just to get an idea. So, okay, thank you very much.
Whoops, I'm muted. Additional questions from council? I'll, I'll take one. Ms. Scobie, you showed us some pictures at the end of the River and Gulf Butler Apartments that are being renovated. And what's the timetable on that? Are they, how much longer will it take? And has there been any problems with shifting tenants?
It is slated to be finished by the end of this year. So we just started the last phase, Phase 5 last week. And so that will go until early December. You know, I'll be honest, the tenant relocation piece is really hard. Moving is really stressful and it's surprisingly emotional. So we are required to give 30 days notice. We also, you know, pay for everything and provide moving services. But yeah, sometimes it's hard. Stuff comes up. And it takes a little bit extra time to move, try to be communicating the best. But yeah, there have been some hiccups along the way, but we've gotten through it. So yeah, just life happens sometimes.
People are attached to their homes and it's not easy to uproot and move.
Exactly. It's probably the hardest part of all of this. Yeah.
I see. Sorry to hear that.
Yeah.
Okay, let's continue with any other questions. This is for the Bloomington Housing Authority Budget. Councilmember Pete Moth Smith.
Yes, I just wanted to follow up. I think I may have misheard something that you said, Ms. Scobie, in response to another question. Did you say that there's $60,000 to $80,000 in write offs per year?
Yeah, historically for the public housing program. Yeah, so that's uncollected rents and some damages. Yeah.
Wow, that's a lot.
Yeah, it is.
All right. Thank you.
Additional second round questions? Going once, twice. Okay. Mr. Lucas, let's proceed now to public comments. Is that correct? We do go to public comments on this presentation, do we not?
I believe so, yes.
So one could indicate through the chat function, raised hand? Do we have any takers?
I don't see any at the moment. Perhaps we can give it just a few more seconds. Folks are looking for the raise hand button. It should be in your control panel. You may need to click the participants button. Or for some users, you may need to click the more option. And again, if, if you're not able to find that, simply type a message into chat to the meeting host. And I don't see any hands raised or comments at the moment.
Okay, then we will come back to council. And who would like to be in council? President Sims, would you like to make a comment?
No comments. I just also wanted to remind the public, many may already know this, but you can also use the raise hand functions through the reactions button if you don't find it on the participants button.
Thank you. I wasn't aware of that. Well, we are, I believe we're back to council now. So if someone would like to make a comment, would you indicate? That you would. Okay. Ms. Scobie, council president Sims.
That's all right. Thank you very much. I just really want to say, we've worked with Ms. Scobie a lot of years, at least my years on the council. And I just want to thank you for all the progress and all the work that we're doing in order to work on some of our lower income housing issues. And I think with the beginning of this project, with the Section 3 and women and minority owned businesses portion that we included in part of that contract, where we were actually having local people and allowing them to work and earn income and learn some skills along the way that could help them later on in their lives and career. I personally think that's big. And I just want to thank you all for doing that and the participants and your board. And I just wanted to say that. So thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments? Well, then, Ms. Scobie, thank you for the work that you do and thank you for your presentation of your budget for the Bloomington Housing Authority. We appreciate you coming.
Yes, you're welcome. Have a good evening.
You too. Thank you. Our next budget item is the Housing and Neighborhood Development Budget. And Mr. Zodi, are you prepared to begin?
Sir, let me get my screen shared. And just one minute. May I ask, members, are you seeing that?
I believe we are.
Okay.
I'm seeing your desktop with a swimmer.
Oh, you are?
Yes, I saw your presentation momentarily and now it's your desktop.
Thank you for saying that, councilmember. I'm trying to get my, give me just a second here, councilmembers. I apologize. Trying to make sure I'm looking at the camera and I have multiple monitors here. So if you'll forgive me, I may be looking a little bit off to the side during the presentation to make sure the monitors are where they need to be. So.
Good.
Yeah. So forgive me for that, but I'll go ahead and start if you're ready. Good evening, councilors. My name is John Zodi. I'm the director of the Housing and Neighborhood Development Department here at the city. It's a pleasure to bring our budget in.
Mr. Zodi, we're not seeing any slides yet. Are you attempting to show them?
Well, I thought it was.
Okay, there it is.
How about that? You see it?
Yes, now it's there.
There you go, Mr. Zodi. Yep.
Everybody, give me just a second here because my transition isn't operating as it should. So let's do this. Well, pardon me, everyone.
It's not working.
Yeah, let's do this yesterday.
I'm online. Would you like me to share my screen instead?
I'll try it one more time, Elizabeth. That's all right. I'm not sure what's going on. Thank you for the offer. Yep. Okay, councilmembers, do you see this?
Yes.
Okay, here we go. Apologies. And thank you again, Elizabeth, for the help there. So again, a pleasure to present our 22, 22 budget request to you from the Department of Housing and Neighborhood Development. Just a little bit about why we exist. Give really some main functions here that we, that we stand as part of our mission, which is to enhance the quality of life for Bloomington residents by developing programs, services and partnerships with the public and organizations here in the community. To preserve that character, to promote safe and affordable housing and to protect neighborhood vitality. You'll see here a picture of a neighborhood cleanup that was done last year. The department also provides, as many of you know, staff support and assistance for four boards and commissions. The first is the Redevelopment Commission. Then there's the Historic Preservation Commission, the Board of Housing Quality Appeals, and the Citizen Advisory Committee for the Distribution of Community Development Block Grants. And that is committing for those of you that may not know or members of the public, that is a citizen group that comes together each year to decide allocations of our community development block grant dollars from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. Background on the department, so we have 17 great full-time employees. I want to take this opportunity to thank the staff at hand. I am new, just about six months in the job here. And we've got a really hardworking, dedicated group of people who worked through the pandemic, figured out a way to do home inspections, figured out a way to do a lot of things during a really difficult time. And I've relied on them very heavily during my time with the department. And it's a fun group to work with and people who are truly public servants. So I want to thank the hand staff. Among their duties is a number of major initiatives. The rental inspection program, as I mentioned, neighborhood compliance, neighborhood services, historic preservation, community development block grant dollars, home investment partnership funds, which are also known as home dollars from HUD, our housing counseling and homeownership assistance programs from HUD, and then the Goal of Affordable Housing, which is obviously a large initiative within the department. I also want to point out the organizational assessment that was done. We've heard about some of those already this weekend presentations. But this is a really, was a great assessment done for our department. It had about 11 recommendations for what we might do in our department. I think all of them are good. And I would like to get going on those. We've already started some, but that's something that we're really focused on here in the department before the end of the year. Update on our 2021 budget goals. Some things we've accomplished. On the neighborhood services side, we funded some improvement grants, which many of you know about. In addition, conducted two neighborhood cleanups. And I want to point out this metric. We removed nearly seven tons of trash and other stuff during the cleanup. So if you've been to a neighborhood cleanup, you know, those are times where people get rid of things and trash, everything else. And I think that really focuses on how hand can contribute toward the effort of sustainability. How are we measuring our contribution toward removal of trash and just making things more efficient and environmental? And that's, that's one thing we're starting to measure more. And we graduated 55 households from our homebuyers classes, developed historic guidelines for the Restaurant Rural District downtown. And we've provided, as we do each year, community development block grant dollars for social services and physical improvement projects. A few highlights there are the O Sage Place Habitat for Humanity Development, new playground equipment at Monroe County United Ministries, and food support at Hoosier Hills Food Bank. Those that are in progress, we are about to start our Residents Academy tomorrow. It's our first session of the 2021 Residents Academy. We are in the process. Our staff are doing their rounds of inspections. And we're well on pace to meet our inspection goal by the end of the year. In addition, to continue to kind of the effort of customer service, it's making sure those U report complaints are responded to and done within a reasonable period of time. Looking at outreach, we can do for students to get them more engaged, both in neighborhoods and make them more aware of changes that are coming their way and our way due to the new state laws, Enrolled Act 148. Continuing to provide that housing counseling, funding COVID CPG dollars that we just got done doing. Our goal of enrolling more folks in our shared appreciation program. We've done two of those thus far this year and hopefully those will pick up by the end of the year. And so these other goals that you see, really looking at the, on the affordable housing side, increasing data sources, resources by making public income and rental information. We get asked that information by property owners and developers. So we want to make sure that's readily available and using incentives to help people both move toward homeownership and to increase the production of affordable housing in Bloomington. Some things we need to work on as we get to the end of the year are sort of the evaluative stuff. So we want to know what people think. So we want to get feedback from people on the Residents Academy, what they think about our homebuyer classes. What do people think about our U report response and our general customer service here in the department? And then we want to really expand the home program. We get several hundred thousand dollars from HUD each year. And we want to make sure that we are doing what we should do there to increase homeownership and increase rental. On the 2022 side, what you see here in this picture is the rendering of the retreat at Switchyard Apartments that will be breaking ground here, I hope in the next month or so, down adjacent to Switchyard Park, which is affordable housing. So we continue to leverage that collaboration with our departments to get for more affordable housing online, using incentives, lots of different types of incentives that you all have considered. To do that, to advance affordable housing, there are many things we need to do, which is also monitoring the workforce units and the affordable units to make sure that the income qualified tenants are still there and that we're keeping all of that up to par. Monitoring our loan portfolio, making sure that you all have information on the loan portfolio and the projects funded through there. Looking at what we can do more out of the Housing Development Fund as money comes into that, in addition to our homeownership programs that we run, especially the shared appreciation program that's also in the Housing Development Fund. On the neighborhood side, really this is about helping reengage. Following the pandemic, there were some things that were cut down. You'll see that also on historic preservation. But keep the Residents Academy attendance going. Make sure we have good feedback and good response for people learning more about government. Get our cleanups done. Keep those neighborhood improvement grants going. Continue the program where this is in the infant stages, but trying to get more students, as I mentioned in our 2021 goals, to figure out how we get more students engaged in neighborhoods and understanding those changes in, in law. And then figure out further how we can make substantive and measurable contributions toward the climate action team. So may not be. So may not be something that immediately comes to mind with hand, but when we're looking at historic preservation, are there energy savings that we can work with ESD on? Or how do we measure our, you know, is the composting we can advocate for in neighborhoods? Is there, you know, just making sure that we are measuring some things to help the effort in the city here to make sure that we are making that contribution in this department. On the rental inspection side, keep going with our inspections, make sure our staff has the training that they need, and they're able to utilize new software that we're getting that you'll see here from Tyler Technologies. Making sure that we are continuing to explain changes that are coming in the landlord-tenant relationship. And then again, create metrics through the organizational assessment that was done for the department. The rental inspection program was a key factor in that. Historic Preservation, I'll summarize this slide by welcoming our new program manager. And you see the Thomas Smith House there that you all are considering for local designation. But really, this is about getting some of the outreach back online with Historic Preservation. We were able to do our seminars and our education outreach and things like that during the pandemics. We want to get a lot of that back online and look at how we need to update the sites and structures list. This is a big sort of community-wide thing that we need to be creating a plan for. So a lot of activity in the Historic Preservation side. And on our HUD program, and continue that housing counseling, making sure that we are getting people through that program and that we're educating them in a way that can get them into homeownership. Look at how we are strategically using our community development block grants here in the community and then continue to expand the home program, as I mentioned. Utilizing those home dollars and the calendar for that is something we're getting more used to and trying to get more projects online through home. So American Rescue Plan, here in the last few minutes here, I want to make sure we spent time on this. There were three buckets you had allocated or appropriated money rather for the landlord risk mitigation and for the Summit Hill Development, which you spoke to Ms. Scobie about during her presentation. And making sure that we're working together on that is important. And looking at how we first put all this into sort of three buckets that you saw in your memo and I'm presenting to you now, which is how we assist the unhoused and those who are housing insecure with the evolution of the Housing and Security Working Group and the Heading Home Initiative. It's intention, I think we'd want to see another large contribution go to the United Way and the folks that are engaged in that activity to make sure that they are using, utilizing the strategies put together from the Heading Home Initiative and able to well-fund and staff and do everything they need to do to stand up those initiatives and those programs, and the city wants to help with that. There are also some things that here within the city could be done, which, looking at how we provide more resources, so how do we reduce those housing barriers? How do we support housing first? So we've done a lot of things to support, for instance Crawford and Kinzer Flats, but the ongoing support of that is very, very important, and we want to make sure that we are doing what we can to support those efforts. So that is the first bucket of assisting the unhoused and those who are housing insecure, who have housing insecurity. The second bucket here in developing rental housing. We feel like we can do this, sort of summarize, this is a big topic, a big initiative, and looking at how we can do it in a number of ways. Looking at how incentives can be used through Housing Development Fund, through the UDO, through tax abatements. Providing rental assistance outreach. There was an article in the New York Times today about eighty-nine percent of the money for rental assistance has not yet been distributed nationwide. And so I will tell you quickly and briefly that I believe it's an awareness issue, not a money issue. The money's there. We just have to make more people aware of it, and I'm happy to share some other numbers with you on why I think that's important here in Monroe County and Bloomington. But rental assistance outreach is really, really important to get people to aware of the resources and to keep them in their homes. And then also by obviously assisting in the physical construction of affordable housing, which is everything from incentives to looking at what types of contributions can be made for the project writ large. Increasing homeownership is a little harder to kind of get your hands around because it can be a lot of things. But when we're looking at the Recover Forward Initiative, I think the Shared Appreciation Program has been one thing that's come online that's really helpful. We just need to get more folks participating in that program. But looking at how we could help with infrastructure, engaging professional services to help market the city program that we already have, and look at what we can do with the housing stock. There are so many things in the housing study and in other documents that I think speak to how you can increase homeownership. But when you're looking at one unit, one single-family home and getting a homeowner in there, that some would say is a sort of a small element of the overall issue, but what are we doing to make that property more and permanently affordable? And that's what we're going after and trying to get people more in their homes, keep them there. And how do we make sure the market has some more stability, I guess, for affordability? So that's the homeownership, and we believe that this request, which we'll talk more about when the appropriation argument comes up as well, if you have any questions, we'll have some good ideas for how we can do that in there. So to summarize highlights for the hand budget, our total request is 2.767299. It's an overall net increase of about $27,000, really 1%, which is largely represented by the cost of living increase that would be put in for staff here in the department. This is the chart, which you see the numbers from the past years, and I know this has become familiar to you all, but see just some very, very small changes in the 1, 2, 3, and 400 lines in the budget there. And then here's the ARPA money in the 300 line. So just to conclude, councilmembers, you know, the hand budget, if approved, would help us sustain our efforts on the operational side. Obviously, the ARPA money would be help do some transformational projects over not just next year, but what would come in the following years to help us preserve that community character, to help protect neighborhood vitality, and promote safe and affordable housing now and in the future. I want to sort of make this point to conclude because it's really important. I think if you were to summarize what we do every day, it's there are people who need housing right now. There's a list, right? Who needs housing right now and who needs housing down the road and what are we planning for? And those two, that dual focus is sort of on the brain every single day. And so I think you can look through our departments and what we're doing to do those things now and the plan in the future, and that's what hand is about. And so I really appreciate your consideration of our request. We'll be happy to answer questions with fifteen seconds to go. So thank you. And I'll stop sharing if that's all right, Chairman Rela.
Yes, I actually prefer that. Otherwise, I can't see folks. So thank you for your presentation, Mr. Zodi. Questions for the hand budget. Who would like to begin first round? I see Councilmember Scambaluri, Volan, and then Pete Mont Smith.
Yes, thank you, and Councilmember Sims too as well. Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Zodi. I appreciate some of the general themes you shared about the Housing Development Fund. Could you please go into more detail on that and talk about the kinds of projects that have been funded and guiding principles that we're using?
Yeah, so there is a, there are guidelines for the Housing Development Fund when it was set up, as you probably know, councilmember. So the idea behind that is to create a fund for incentives. This was recommended in the housing study, I believe, or actually in the comm plan. Anyway, it's been recommended, it was recommended originally, it was stood up as a fund. So originally, the idea was to provide incentives, look at how those who participate and absorb incentives into development projects because then could then provide incentives back to the city that could help with future affordable housing development. The biggest expenditures out of there, there's been some Bloomington Cooperative Housing. I've got a budget line or an expense report out of the Housing Development Fund that we could share. But the largest expenditure, there are some projects for Bloomington Cooperative Housing. The money for the Shared Appreciation Program that the city does is also in there. That's $450,000, which has been reduced, you know, as people have taken part of that program for the shared appreciation. We contributed the loan for the Union at Crescent Apartments. I'm looking at that list now, councilmember. So $250,000 from Housing Development for a loan. And there's also a grant for Union at Crescent and then Bloomington Cooperative Housing. And then we've done about $70,000 in down payment assistance through the Shared Appreciation Program out of there. So those are some transactions that have come out in the last year or two, and so we look for more revenue to come in there from those folks. I know there's a local developer who might be making contributions in the next couple of years as well to be fed that incentive resource.
Good. And in the less than a minute we have left, could you talk about the evaluation process? How do we decide if an investment from that fund has been a good one or not?
Well, I think we, it's a good question for how do we decide if it's been a good one? I think we're more, because we're toward the beginning here, I think we look at, is it going to be, right? And so I will throw a nod to our ESD department where we look at a calculation of what is, for instance, a tax abatement. What do we spend per unit of affordable housing? And during the, when you all considered the tax abatement from Real America for the Retreat at Switchyard Apartments, that was a specific discussion, I think Alex Crowley had with you about that eighteen to twenty thousand dollars and what we spend per unit on incentives. Now, I will tell you that some HUD programming, we look at that a little differently because there are different criteria. But those are some of the metrics we would use to, for one piece of the evaluation, to look at what we are spending per unit, and I'm out of time.
Thanks. Thank you.
Sorry. Moving on to Councilmember Volan.
Thanks. Just a brief question, Mr. Zodi. Thanks for the presentation. You listed that there were fourteen hundred and seventy-five rental inspections scheduled, but I assume that those are more than fourteen hundred and seventy-five units being inspected every year? I mean, if not, there's twenty-five or so thousand rental units in town. How is that managed?
How's it work? Sure. Good question. So there are about 25,200 rental units in the city of Bloomington. There are three, four, and five-year permits, as you know, and so we do the goal of fourteen hundred and seventy-five inspections units each year. Sounds like it's low. When you look at, it's basically on a rolling basis, though. We talked about this today and how the scheduling is done. And I said, you know, I've only been here a little bit. How does this work? And so those number of inspections could include multiple units. So when it's, how am I trying to explain this? If somebody calls in for their cycle inspection, it could be a property owner that says I need these properties inspected. So that would count as an inspection, and the units are, can be part, there can be multiple units in an inspection versus one unit per one inspection, if that makes sense. So, but because of the three-year, four-year, five-year permit, you could have a group of units that aren't, that are only inspected every five years. So it's basically a giant rolling schedule of inspections that we work with property owners on.
Is it possible to break that number down and send us the number of units inspected each year? Three, like three-year inspection, three units that are inspected every three years, four and five for any given year? In other words, how many units did you inspect this year that were on a five-year cycle?
Sure. So how many units are inspected? How much, how many units, just to clarify, how many units are inspected on a three, four, and five-year permit?
Exactly, exactly. That's, you know, every year, instead of saying how many cycle inspections you conducted, say how many units you inspected.
Gotcha. Yeah, that's helpful to clarify because that's, that was a budget goal from this year, and it's in one for next year, so the number we use is important, so we can get that. Thank you.
I mean, is that actually a goal? I mean, isn't it really more just of a requirement? Because you have to inspect apartments on a five-year basis at the minimum?
Yes, I would say that it's a goal because, number one, it's a big function of what the department does. We are one of the few, we are one of the few cities that has a rental inspection program in the state, as you know. But also there are times where people cancel, where they don't show up. You know, we have to do, there's quite a bit of effort. There can be quite a bit of effort to make sure a unit is inspected, and so.
All right.
Okay.
Thanks, Mr. Zodi.
There you go. Yep.
Thank you for keeping the time. Councilmember Pete Smith.
Yes, thank you very much. What is the comprehensive strategic plan for providing housing in Bloomington to fulfill current and future needs, say ten, twenty years? Is there such a strategic plan? What is it? Where is it?
Sure. Thanks for asking. I would say, if I can go back to the conversations and the questions I've heard previously this week, we've got the comprehensive plan that you all have mentioned. I think, you know, Page sixty-four mentions the need to develop a comprehensive strategic plan for housing. The mayor had a document, you know, a five-page document or so from 2018. Looking at that, there are a number of deliverables that have been done on that document. But then last year, we commissioned, as all of you know, a housing study for Bloomington. So I would tell you, and I think your question earlier in the week, Councilmember Pete Mont Smith, was, is the housing study the city's strategic plan for housing? I would say it's a part of it, but I think the, all of those documents together, in addition to what the Housing and Security Working Group has done, in addition to, I understand the BDC is going to be coming up, an economic development plan that will have housing in it. I would say that we need to look at all of those, and it's more about a status check on where we are with those things. There are plenty of strategies, there are lots of strategies in those documents. And I would say, being newer to the department, with six months in here, that it would be good to go through with councilmembers and anyone else to see where we are on those things. There are, for instance, you take the hospital site, the hospital site's mentioned in those documents, and what's a deliverable? How are we approaching the goal orientation for affordable housing on the hospital site? And there's a fiscal study of the site that's been commissioned, if you will. It's in draft form, but it's, it will make recommendations sort of based on metrics and the entire master plan about what we could look for on affordable housing there. The housing study has the number of housing units we need, what it predicts Bloomington needs over the next ten years. So the numbers are there, and I'd really encourage a discussion about how we become comfortable or try to become comfortable, more familiar, whatever your comfort level needs to be with where we are with things and what we need to do differently. But before we, I would advocate doing anything else, I think we really would need to get, really take a hard look at those documents with whoever would like to and figure out what else you would like. So I think we've got some good strategies to follow right now.
Okay, but would you agree that it takes more than just the city of Bloomington to take action on providing enough different types of housing?
Of course, yeah. Don't let, I hope I didn't blow past that. My answer, no, absolutely.
So a plan that involves the county and BDC and others?
Sure, yeah. I think ROI and the county commissioners and, you know, it's one of the things we're doing now is we've worked with the county. The county is involved in the rental assistance discussions we have, so that's one piece of housing. But I understand what you're saying, and a regional approach, I think, is a good one.
Thank you.
Very good. We'll continue with first round of questions. Who would like to continue? Councilmember Flaherty.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Zodi, for the presentation. I'll follow up just a bit on the points Councilmember Mont Smith was making. I would say that I think there would be value if the city's position is that our housing strategy is complete or near complete to aggregating and collecting those strategies in a report of some kind that is accessible to us as councilmembers and to the public. I think our discussions earlier this year with the UDO in the context of housing and housing affordability, a lot of community members. A, we're unaware of things like the housing study or other things where we have strategies pointed out, Climate Action Plan, Comprehensive Plan. But I think unifying those things might be good, but I wanted to ask more specifically about the opportunities or challenges presented by the potential for annexation and the need to inventory additional areas of housing and strategize in perhaps some new and different ways that I imagine when we integrated with perhaps an updated Comprehensive Plan, UDO, et cetera. Maybe that is an opportunity to pursue some of this unifying of housing strategies that we've had collected in various places. What are your thoughts about sort of both of those things? The idea of trying to unify and make clearer the strategy piece and then also how annexation may affect that and depending on what happens there.
Sure. Well, I think the consolidation, unification of what is out there is great. I think the more people can look at one or a few documents or whatever form they take to be on the same page is always better, right? So if we all can say, you know, we need to do X, Y, and Z, that's, I believe, that's a strong approach. And I think we can do that by looking at the numbers and the metrics and how are we approaching? And I really feel, having been, and I'm. And I really feel, having been, and I've got one minute here, but having been in the department for six months, knowing immediately what projects needed to happen. So what do we need to do to get those sixty-four units down at Retreat at Switchyard Park? What do we need to be doing on the hospital site right now? I want to make sure that we're, that we are not reinventing any wheels on our end and making sure that we can consolidate as much. So I agree with you. On the annexation side, we really, there are two areas of the department that would be most impacted by annexation, which is the rental inspection program. It looks like I think we would add about fifteen to two, fifteen hundred to two thousand more rental properties, rental units, I should say. And then our neighborhood services program, there were about two dozen new potential neighborhoods that were identified in the areas intended for annexation. So those are two areas of focus in the department that we would really hone in on with respect to annexation.
Okay, thank you.
Councilperson Ed Sims?
Thank you. Thank you for president, Director Zodi. And I'll just piggyback a little bit on councilmember's gambolary. Not exactly, but I do know when we were talking about measurables with regard to success or a goal meeting. We'll just look forward to looking at those successes and those measurements moving forward. So it's not a warning, just want to let you know we'll be talking about that.
I'd be glad to. Any conversations, welcome.
Yes, thank you. But a couple of comments. And the one thing, in your presentation, you mentioned that in the neighborhood cleanups, seven tons of trash was collected and you mentioned how this was aiding in sustainability efforts. Did I, I didn't misspeak, did I?
No, I was just maybe to clarify a little bit, Mr. President, that the trash included sort of other things. So furniture, wood chips, anything people got, that was gotten rid of.
Well, that's two of my next real comment. How much, if you can share with that, how much of that material were recyclable or how much was reused of those seven tons and how much went to the landfill?
That's a great question. I would say, so to break it down quickly, I don't have a number for you, first of all. Let me tell you how it's broken down. We have the wood shipping trucks, so people bring brush and it wood chips in there. We have a sanitation truck for anything that can't be recycled or taken to restore or goodwill. That has to be thrown in the sanitation truck. We have hazmat disposal of metal, glass, and chemicals. And then we have a sort of garage sale site where people bring stuff for the taking. And it's usually in the middle of the neighborhood and people just bring furniture and whatever. And so all told, that equals about seven tons from our neighborhood cleanups last year. I can get you a more specific number on that which was recycled, that some of it had to be disposed of due to hazmat and things like that.
Okay, that's not urgent right now, but I'd like to know how much that we took or we were able to avoid the landfill. And lastly, with the time I have, in your presentation also during the why we exist portion and also again in the conclusion portion, you mentioned preserve community character. And I guess I just really want to hear from you, what do you mean by that? And what does that mean, preserve community character? What does that mean to you and for the city?
Sure. Well, I think I'd go back to the mayor's goals of sustainability and equity. We have a relatively small city compared to the level of activity that we have in this college town. And I think that we have a really vibrant character. I think as far as hand goes, the character of the community exists in our housing stock, our neighborhoods. So when you look at our Title VI activities, our historic preservation activity, our goal of increasing affordable housing, it's a question, is the community, does the character and the vitality work for everyone? And I think we've got to focus, make sure that we're focusing on sustainability and equity in the long term.
Okay. I'm sorry, I hate to be rude. I think we're out of time. Thanks for that and maybe we are in fact later. Oh, you're fine. Thank you.
Chairman Relo, I wonder if I might respond to Councilmember Volan's question on inspections real quick, just to throw out a number I have. Is that all right?
Sure.
So Councilmember Volan, last year, we inspected seven thousand one hundred and eighty-four units in the calendar year 2020 to give you an idea of what that, yeah, the inspections done was probably similar to that fifteen hundred, but the number of units was over seven thousand. So that should give you an idea.
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you for following up. Further questions? First round. I see, Councilmember Volan, you already asked, so I'm going to ask one first. Mr. Zodi, about only thirty-five percent of the housing stock in Bloomington is owner occupied. And I know that homeownership is a goal of yours. I wondered, do you have a overall strategy in terms of getting to a certain percent or a certain absolute number? Or is it just a matter of adding units when you can or adding homeownership, assisting with homeownership when you were able? In other words, you know, do we have a strategy in mind, a goal in mind to get to that, to that place?
Sure. The, I would say we do have a goal. Councilmember Relo, the housing study in 2020 indicates we, I think we need to have eight hundred more units or eight hundred more single-family homes, eight hundred more people in homeownership status over the next ten years. We need to look at that with rental housing. So that came out of the Bloomington housing study. And I will tell you, two parts, we don't want to make it incidental, right? It's really tough to tackle what is one person need versus what another person needs. It can take a while to get someone in the pipeline. They have very different financial situations. But I think it is doing what we can to amp up and make sure as many people as possible know about the homeownership programs that the city has. Down payment assistance, shared equity, what sort, what, you know, there were Realtors who were really interested in being involved with first-time home buyers. It's helping people through that process. And it's tough because you feel like you, you know, we got one shared equity program down and it's, you know, that's a, that's a big win because it's an important program and a really good financial resource. But then, well, is that just one person? Then you have to look at the long-term affordability. So it can't be incidental. It has to be very strategic and we have a number goal. How we get there is going to be quite varied in what resources we use. So it's just something we have to tackle every day.
Could you give us any further information? It slips my mind. It's the company that was reported in the paper that ostensibly was wanting to help establish homeownership. And it seemed to be kind of mysterious to a number of us. Do you have any further information on that?
Yeah, so I would be conservative in my response here. The city isn't partnering with that company. I think the article conflated it a little bit with what we do and what the company does. So I want to be clear about that. And I don't mean clear in a pejorative way. It's just, we just haven't been working with them. The article kind of mixed them together, I think. And so, as our understanding is that Landis, the company, is sort of a rent-to-own, where you would rent from the company for a couple of years and then have an option to buy. And I think we, with our role from the city would be to make sure that as people go into the homeownership process, if they wanted any incentives from the city, I know we're out of time, that they would go through a home buyer's class. It's our goal to make sure people are in the best position to own a home. So whether that be through education, helping them with finance, that's something the city can do to be on the front line of how someone gets into homeownership.
Okay, thank you. I'm sure a number of us would like to learn more about Landis. Councilmember Volan, you were next.
Yes, I wanted to follow up on my first question by asking about the status of Hand's rental inspection program with respect to statute. There have been some dramatic changes at the State House. To what extent is our rental inspection program intact or in jeopardy?
Well, it is intact. I would say the, and it's not in jeopardy at this time. I mean, it's, you know, the legislature is an annual body, so I hope it's intact. I think it provides a lot of value to the city, as I'm sure many of you do.
We, I think we all agree on that.
Yeah. What is no longer able to be required is the Tenants' Rights and Responsibilities Document, which we believe helps provide education to tenants and letting them know what their rights are, right? That's really the, that's the sort of on paper, concrete thing that we can no longer, excuse me, require. The inspection side hasn't changed a lot. There are just, we need to be careful about how much we engage in the landlord-tenant relationship and telling landlords what you can and can't do. That's where we start to creep toward a line that we've always got to be mindful of and we have frequent conversations with our legal department about.
Okay, that's interesting. With respect to the statement, I do recall that now, can Hand simply send the statement to every address that is a rental? I mean, you can't require the landlords to get the signature of the tenant, but can the information at least be distributed, like in the welcome packets?
Yeah, I believe it could. And we can't require, yeah, go ahead, excuse me.
Well, I just got the welcome packet the other day and there were magnets and helpful things in it. But one thing I didn't like, it mentioned some of the rights of a tenant, but it was very, what's the word I'm looking for? Abstract, you know? And there wasn't a letter specifically saying, here are your rights, here are your responsibilities. Sure. Like, what do you think about that?
I am all for more communication. I don't mean to sound fluffish to give you that, but I do think anytime, any more we can communicate, the better. We just have to make sure we're doing it legally with that relationship, Councilmember. I think it's, if it's not required, if we aren't requiring it, then yes, I think it could be done.
But just to be clear, we can no longer, we can still disseminate that information, but we can't require landlords to do it and get a signature from the tenant that they've read it.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you so much.
We're in second round of questions. Councilmember Rosenbarger and then Smith?
Thank you. Thank you, Director Zodi, for that presentation. I have a couple of questions around developing rental housing that is affordable. Have you thought about opening some of our programs that are only for owner-occupied homeowners to something like small, small-time landlords in the city? So when, you know, if we have something like, I don't think this exists, but you know, like a, like a front porch grant program or something, like renovate a front porch. If something like that could be open to landlords that maybe own and manage five or fewer rentals so that they could have some incentive to keep their properties like looking nice and safe and then taking some cost away from them that would hopefully be passed on to the tenants there?
You know, first response of councilmembers, I would need to see what some of our federal home programming could do there. It's mostly owner-occupied stuff, but it's an interesting idea to look at. I think we should talk more about it because I, beyond that, I don't know. If we could just depend on the program and the guidelines associated with it. So I'd be glad to talk to you more about it, though. It's an interesting concept.
Great, thank you. And then a second question, a little in the same realm. I think there was a time when the city funded Kona a little bit and I could be wrong about that. But wondering about helping develop a tenants' association in Bloomington to, you know, give tenants a place for resources and sort of working together just so we have, some tenants can have a more common voice. I think it is a little more difficult just because tenants can be transient, so it might not be such a big association, but something that could be useful.
Yeah, I know there's a group that in town that is sort of headed in that direction with kind of being a collective place for tenants, sort of, you know, I think many of you know, the Neighborhood United Group, if I may, that, hopefully don't mind me sharing that. But that group has started and I've heard from them and have dialogue with them. So I think how they interact with neighborhood associations. I don't want to be sort of looking at things as sort of mutually exclusive. I mean, renters live in neighborhoods and I think as much as we can, we want to be inclusive in that effort, right? And our funding for neighborhoods doesn't exclude, it doesn't just go to organize neighborhood associations. It's not restricted for that. So if there are a group of renters that were doing something, we'd evaluate it like any other application and take a look at it. So I don't want to be exclusive to renters at all. You're right that renters are less cohesive naturally because they're spread out all over the city versus maybe living in one, the other interests are in different places versus one neighborhood association. So I think it's a question of conversation and what the logistics look like.
Thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Zodi. Appreciate it very much. Hand is just a fantastic wing in the city. So with the regard to the neighborhood cleanups, they're fantastic. I was involved with them last year. Is there some plans for a couple of neighborhoods coming up? And if not, how do neighborhoods solicit a neighborhood cleanup from the Hand Department?
Sure. Well, we're done with our two this year. We do two a year right now. So we did those in May and June. And if somebody in the neighborhood is interested, they should just contact the department. They can call three four nine three four two zero or reach out to Angela Van Roy, who's our Neighborhood Services Program Manager, and you can find her email on the city website. Or I can put it in the chat, maybe if I can figure out how to do that. So I'd be glad to. But that's how you go about it, Councilmember.
Well, thank you very much and I encourage anyone who's thinking about it in the neighborhood to contact the Hand Department. It's a fantastic service that the city does in Hand. So thank you.
Thank you.
Additional council questions? We're in second round and I see Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, Mr. Zodi, I'm going to ask you the same question that I asked Ms. Scobie and that is whether the census figures that may be quite inaccurate for Bloomington are used to determine funding from HUD for the programs that you administer.
Thanks for the question, Councilmember. And I, sorry, I'm just typing Angela's email in the chat here. So population is one of the factors in the two allocation formulas that HUD uses to decide or home dollars in C W G. The formulas are quite complicated, as you might suspect, but population is a factor. We have not heard from HUD anything about the census and what might change, as I think I heard Amber say. Funding is, you know, it's an appropriate, it's based on an appropriation from Congress and it has to go, you know, it's a puzzle, right? So if one community gets, has to get more, then somebody may have to get less. But we've gotten no information from HUD on that at all. So, but I will tell you that it is a factor in the formula. I can't tell you just because I have not been able to decipher the formula enough, to be quite honest, about how much it weights the formula. It's a very long statute and it has about seven steps and everything else. So, but it is a factor and we are very much aware of that implication if it were to come down. So, but those are the two, two ways in which it could be impacted. I will tell you also, we are well out of the risk of this, but we are an entitlement community from HUD. So that means we have a fifty thousand population or higher, which means we get our funds directly from the federal government and we're, of course, in no danger of losing our entitlement status. But that is a population factor that, from a very basic level, determines how we get our federal money from HUD.
All right, we'll have to keep an eye on the figures. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Who would like to go next? Any takers? I'll ask a question then. Mr. Zodi, remind me, how often do you inspect apartments?
With their own, the occupants' permit time periods are three, four, and five years. So operationally, inspections are done virtually every day. So it depends on the permit that a unit or a complex has on, and the code lays out what criterion determine whether a three-year, four-year, or five-year permit. So we use that information to schedule those and work with the property owners.
So we've been building a lot of large multifamily apartments and those are, of course, are included as well. And your staff, I'm just envisioning needing more staff in the future. We've been adding so many units, like, are you keeping pace?
We are. And we just replaced an inspector, so we are full staff on our neighborhood compliance officers and they're busy. If, you know, we've indicated that the number of staff we believe would need to increase following the annexation process, if the area is intended or in fact annexed. For right now, we're keeping up, but they are busy. You know, part of the inspection process is, in addition to going out, it's Uh, for right now, we're keeping up, but they are busy. Uh, you know, part of the inspection process is in addition to going out, it's um, you know, the processing of the of the report and making sure that that everything goes as it should with conveying the information back to the property owner. So uh, we're busy. Um, we're hanging in there.
Okay, I've got a little time left. Um, you alluded to uh changes in state law that affect renters. Could you, could you talk a little bit about that?
Sure. So Senate Rule Act 148, you know, there was a, the governor, uh, legislature passed a law, the governor vetoed, and then they came in and overrode his veto. It's basically makes the bottom line, it makes changes to the landlord tenant relationship and what what a government uh can require, more specifically us. Um, while we while we could previously require that the landlords, uh, you know, make available, for instance, the tenant's rights or responsibilities um document, we um can no longer require that under state law because the the law, the premise of the law was sort of backing away uh the regulation of how of what a government could regulate between the landlord and the tenant. And so what we're seeing that on the practical side is um just making sure that we step up our education efforts for tenants. Uh, I think the landlord, the apartment association has been good to work with on this and and a lot of our landlords, I will say, still do the rights or responsibilities document, even though they're not required to. So um, we are, we're working through it.
I see. That's uh regretful that that action was taken. Um, okay, let's continue with questions. Is there any more? From council, I don't see anymore. Okay, um, Mr. Lucas, let's go to the public. Uh, I see that one has already been queued up uh from Nigel Roydsong. Do you have that? I guess it's been sent to me privately. Uh, so here here is a question, uh, Mr. Zodi. Roughly how many housing units or families will be housed by the 1.5 million dollar, million dollars for Housing First? Is it enough to ensure housing security in our community? What is the timeline to achieve total housing security, otherwise known as eliminate long term homelessness in our community? Um, and then it it concludes by saying, is he aware that uh the Bloomington Commission on Sustainability passed a Housing First Resolution? And is there any plans by hand to seek to to achieve the requests set out in that resolution? So it's a multi-part question. I did, I don't know if you got most of it. I could repeat it if you need it.
Um, I'll do my best. Um, first, I'm not prepared to say. Oh, sure. Yeah.
Um, sorry, just as a, if that was a a public comment that was being read aloud, uh, pertaining to our normal uh rules and processes for that, we should move on to the next public comment. Perhaps a council member may take up the question, but I just want to make sure we're treating everyone.
Oh, that's right. That's right. I'm sorry. That was, that is comment and we will, we don't address comments, but we could do it uh during returning back. And I I apologize for that, Mr. Zodiac conflated that with council comments. So let's go to, and Ms. Roydsong will will try to address that when we come back to council. So uh, let's go to additional public comment. Mr. Lucas, what do we have?
Yes, I see Greg Alexander would like to comment and should now be able to do so.
Thank you. Um, my name is Greg Alexander. Um, for the past week, I've been bringing sidewalk clearing tools with me and leaving early when I go to get my kids from school. I put in about five hours of labor so far at more than a dozen problem spots. And yesterday, for the first time in five years, as a Fairview Elementary parent, we took the neighborhood route home without being forced off of the sidewalk into the street. No thanks to Hand. In some sense, it felt amazing. The come down today was hard, though. On my way to the school, I found that one of the neighbors had parked their car on the sidewalk just six feet from where I had just cleared it the day before. All of my work undone, just like that. I knocked on their front door and yelled, get your car them off the sidewalk. And you won't believe this, but when I came back 10 minutes later, their car was gone. Wow. Two days without being forced into the street out of five years. No thanks to Hand. In another sense, it feels absolutely awful. I have little spots of poison ivy all over my body. I hate poison ivy. You know, when I bought my house 15 years ago, I decided to transform the ugly stairlawn into something a little more lively. And I had to fight Hand constantly for the first four years. Under pretensive law, they tried to enforce a purely aesthetic standard. They couldn't appreciate all the hard work I was doing, and I'm telling you this because every time I have seen poison ivy in my yard, I have immediately and completely destroyed it. There hasn't been one poison ivy plant in my yard in five years, and here I am today, itchy. I have not once known Hand to effectively clear a sidewalk through enforcement. Once I told them about a sidewalk that was half blocked with poison ivy, that one time, I actually received a response explaining their non-enforcement. They said, you're wrong. It's eunomous. I wasn't wrong. It's eunomous and poison ivy, and it's blocking half the sidewalk. It's still there today. Hand has an absolutely huge responsibility. I don't think it makes any sense that pedestrian transportation is part of that burden. But since that's where it's at, I wish the Hand Director could tell you directly, that task is not being completed. Maybe it should be assigned to a different department. I've got about another three hours of work ahead of me before I'd say that route is done. It sure would be awesome if someone else would take care of the two properties where poison ivy still grows onto the sidewalk. I am so itchy. Thank you for your time.
Who do, who do we have next, Mr. Lucas? Thank you for your comment, Mr. Alexander.
I don't see any additional hands raised at the moment. Uh, I did have a message in chat that Sam Dove would like to provide a public comment, although I've not yet received it. Um, I'm happy to pass that along, uh, perhaps in writing if if uh if we receive it uh here momentarily.
I see uh Ms. Roydsong has raised her hand.
Yes, she should now be able to comment.
Hello, thank you. I just have a one follow up question to my earlier questions about um Housing First and the the Housing First Resolution. Does the budget, the 2022 proposed budget for Hand include a full time Housing First position to ensure the end of our long term, of long term homelessness in our community? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, and we'll endeavor to address that question when we come back to council. Mr. Lucas, do we have anything for Mr. Dove?
Not at the moment, no. And I don't see any other requests for comment.
Okay, let's just wait a moment. If anyone would like to comment, please use the raise hand function. Okay, anything, Mr. Lucas?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay, then we'll come back to council. Um, who would like to begin? I I I guess I posed the question, could we start there? Uh, Mr. Zodi, wonder, could you, could you fill us in on the Housing First questions uh that Ms. Roydsong uh posed?
Sure. I'll I'll answer her last question first. There's not a position in the housing or in the Housing Neighborhood Development Budget this year in the operating budget for a Housing First staffer. Um, I would uh encourage everyone to um including Ms. Ratsong um as the Housing and Security Working Group and the Heading Home Initiative, the United United Way is standing up. That's going to be a large area of focus for them. I don't want to put it on them, so to speak. We're a full partner in this, the city is. But we are uh moving resources toward where there is a specific focus and effort of the Heading Home Initiative that have been being worked on for the last year or so. As far as the Housing First issue and whether the ARCA money that is requested is going to solve that issue, no, it won't. And I'm not prepared to say when that will be solved. Um, I don't think that's a, not comfortable uh giving you a hard deadline on when we'll no longer need a Housing First uh strategy or resources for that, just because I think um I don't believe that's how the housing process works. Um, you know, there you're hopefully have as few at risk people as possible, but um, I don't know that there hasn't been at risk folks in our city, state, country at at any point in time. There's always somebody that needs uh resources, and that's why we do what we do. The Housing First model, I will say, requires not just the house or the roof, but it requires sustained and uh as comprehensive as possible, wraparound services to make that successful. And so that's something that personally I'm very passionate about because I want to see places like Kinzer Flats and Crawford succeed. And so I don't think that that there's ever a punctuation on that, as long as there are people in there who need housing and who uh have are at risk populations or vulnerable populations, we need to be there to do our best to help. And so um, I'm not prepared to say when the end date on that is because I don't, um, I I can't give you one. Uh, but uh, the uh, the challenge is there and we need to be prepared to uh to to address it. The city, Heading Home, United Way, everybody on this call, uh, we're all part of this community. So that answers your question.
Okay.
And and direct, I should directed that to you, uh, Councilmember Rallo. I apologize.
No, no, that's quite all right. And are you aware of the of the uh BICOS uh uh resolution?
I I'm not. Uh, and that's may just be amiss on my part and I can, I can check it out.
Okay, we should send that to you then. Okay, very good. Uh, so, Mr. Lucas, uh, did you, you received the comment from Mr. Dove. Is that correct?
I have, yes, thank you. Uh, Sam says that uh police can't give tickets to people on on the street when they park a car. And uh, that's the end of the comment, and I also apologize. I I neglected to start the timer during that last question, so.
Okay, all right. Um, further council questions? Uh, Councilmember Flurty.
Thank you. I actually did have a question. Um, it was sort of on my mind and and was spurred further by some of the um questions from Ms. Ratsong. And and sort of following really on Mr. Zodi, your final point about the urgency of of housing and security in Bloomington and the need to get people into housing now um and how we've got, you know, a list of folks who can't use vouchers and and that sort of thing. Um, I think the Landlord Risk Mitigation Fund that V H A is establishing is a really promising move on that front. We've also talked about the idea of folks who need that support, who who whom a landlord risk mitigation fund could support that who are not Section Eight Housing Choice voucher holders. You might have rapid rehousing uh payment available of some kind, whether through Beacon or or trustees. Um, or uh maybe tenants that are perceived to be high risk due to credit history or a felony background or something like that that are discriminated against currently. Uh, who could be backed up by a program like a Landlord Risk Mitigation Fund that is more expansive than what's currently supplied? And I guess my opinion is that uh that need is pretty urgent based on what I've learned from folks in social services and housing in our community. And I feel like it's pretty well demonstrated in other places. I know we're sort of getting the first step off the ground, but I feel like uh, maybe it's time to move on step two as well. Wh- what can you tell us about the department or the administration's orientation towards a more expansive and broader landlord risk mitigation fund? And if we're going to see that, when we might see that?
Yeah, I think we want to, and I will tell you, Councilmember Flurty, in the previous discussion that you and I were on, if the mayor does believe that 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 risk mitigation fund is more expansive than just voucher holders, so I think we need to uh tackle that. I do want to um work with the Housing Authority first just to get some best practices down on how we go about it. But I think it's working with the Apartment Association and, you know, I don't want to always say we need a list of names. It's just, uh, we need to know there's a population out there and where is the targeted population? Um, I will take a little bit, if I may, counselor, to talk about the rental assistance issue too, because it goes into that, right? What what is the most immediate need of a of a landlord right now and thus a tenant? Is it rent backed rent? And are they weary of renewing a lease of a tenant because of backed rent or because of some other issue? And what risk are they willing to assume to keep that tenant in their house? And I think that comes with looking at a risk mitigation effort. But I will tell you, the most urgent thing right now today, and I can give you more detail, uh, is the rental assistance issue and how we can alleviate the risk that a landlord might need to assume by helping a tenant get their back rent paid and helping them with forward facing rent. So I think it's a two pronged sort of deal, but to not sidestep in question, I want to work with the Housing Authority on that landlord mitigation and figure out how we, I don't want to duplicate efforts, right? So I don't want to, I want to make sure we're coordinating that as best as possible.
Thank you. Just to follow up on that, Mr. Zodi, uh, you 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 stated, I think you said 89% of money for rental assistance is unused. Is that correct? And that's a staggering amount. Um, is that, is is that the case here as well in in Monroe County or in Bloomington?
No, it's um, I might characterize it differently, Councilmember Rallo. So 89% of the money that was appropriated for this at the federal level, right? Um, we had a call with uh Indiana Housing uh Community Development Agency this morning uh because we're sort of tackling the rental assistance issue as a as a group. Councilmembers Rosenbarger and Sims were on that call a couple of weeks ago. I will tell you these quick numbers. 300, there have been 340 households assisted um in Monroe County from uh the the state's rental assistance program. Um, there are 220 applications in progress and um we, they know that 114, 114 households are in the queue to get assistance at this as of today. Okay, so if you compare that with another, we we need some more outreach here. Um, uh, West Lafayette, our fierce competitor, uh, they've had 769 households assisted through the state's rental assistance program. To give you an idea of another college town, what we believe, and I don't want to speak for anybody on that group, is that this is a communication issue. We are getting some resources from IH CDA to get the word out better about rental assistance. We're working with the trustees. Uh, the county uh thankfully has appropriated money to the trustees that did this last year to get rental assistance out the door. That money is not all used yet. Um, and so we need to get people in the pipeline to apply, and they need to be aware of what they can do. There's a piece of that outreach is also focused on landlords to make sure that they have the resources out there. People, the money is there. We just have to get it in people's hands if they qualify. So um, we got to get the money out the door, and that's the state, the state program is robust. Um, there's a lot of issues of why the city hasn't appropriated money. I don't want to say a lot of issues with the city, but it's federal money. So we have to be careful about duplicating efforts with federal money. But the city has awarded, you know, we just are in the process of awarding Beacon over $100,000 to help with rental assistance through C W G money. Um, Jack Hopkins' money has helped St. Vincent de Paul help with rental assistance. So there is money being awarded locally, either through the city or all through the city in this case, to help with rental assistance. Um, so.
And you, and you have a list of all landlords, so you could contact them and say, it's in everyone's interest to get this money, seems to me.
Yeah, yeah.
So you're doing that too?
We are in the process of that, yeah. We're
Okay, good.
We're convening this group next week and we're going to talk sort of logistics about where do we need, do we need to make computers available for applications? Do we need to get some flyers out? We've got a PowerPoint presentation specifically focused on landlords and I'm going to share with the Apartment Association. Uh, all that kind of stuff. It's it's about, the outreach needs to, needs to to be there. And and I, I'm out of time. I want to say one more thing.
Well, well, thanks for following up on that. Um, so any other questions from council before we go to final comment? Uh, Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, uh, Mr. Zodi, what is Hand's responsibility as far as um making sure sidewalks are clear of vegetation and other obstructions?
Really, that's a, that's a Title 12, uh, which would be engineering, uh, Councilmember Piedmont Smith. So um, as far as neighborhood compliance goes, I don't, you know, we we are out in the neighborhoods and if we see something, I think we communicate it back. But it's largely focused on on engineering and and uh that side of the house, if you will, is my understanding. If anybody has other thoughts there, I'm happy to hear it, but that's that's my understanding. So.
So it doesn't fall under, uh, what is it, Title Six, weeds and trash?
Right, it's under Title 12, is my understanding. I need to look to verify that, but I think it's Title 12.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, let's go to comments. Would anyone care to make a comment on Hand's budget? Uh, Councilmember Scannellory.
Yes, thank you. Um, thank you for the good work you do every single day. Thank you for the efforts you've put into this budget. I also wanted to sing the praises of some of your staff members. Uh, in the district I represent, several neighborhoods applied to the uh neighborhood grant program and were successful in that regard. And to a person, um, they raved about Hand staff and their experience and getting walked through that. So thank you. Please extend um our thanks to your, to your staff. Ditto everyone who is working on Residence Academy. Um, I have several residents who are participating in that and were accepted for it. Um, so again, those those are um sometimes the less visible programs that you do, but they're very important. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Uh, further comments? Okay, uh, Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, uh, Citizens Academy about 20 years ago is actually one of the first ways I became involved with the city of Bloomington, so it's a great program. Um, but uh, tonight I'm going to abstain on this budget because I do have concerns that we But tonight I'm going to abstain on this budget because I do have concerns that we do not have a comprehensive housing strategy. Like Mr. Zodi said, we have various documents with various recommendations for what we can do to increase the housing and especially affordable housing in our community. But we do not have a document that says, here's what we're going to do, here's who we're going to work with, here is how it's going to get done, and here's the timeline. And on an issue that's as important here in Bloomington as housing, I think we really need that. So I'm disappointed that that is not in the plans for next year. And, you know, I can reach out and talk with Mr. Zodi about that after this week, but that's the reason why I will pass this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Volin, did you have a comment?
Yes, just briefly, I wanted to thank Mr. Zodi for the presentation, and I wanted to echo a praise for Hand staff, especially Angela Van Roy, whose new effort to reach out to students to make them better neighbors, to teach them, you know, the neighboring project is most welcome. So I just wanted to commend them for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comment? Mr. Zodi, thank you so much for your presentation and your work, and we'll now entertain a do-pass recommendation. Would someone like to make it?
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
My understanding is that there's, there's no, that's, that's never been in order in committee of the whole, that you can just simply call for the vote, that there's no need to ask for the recommendation. Am I correct, Mr. Lucas?
I'm not sure that it's out of order to, to move do-pass, but
It's not required.
Move do-pass.
I'd like to answer my question.
I don't think it's inappropriate to, to call the role on, on the budget without a motion. I think you all understand that you're here to make recommendations on each department's budget.
Okay, well, yeah. So we have a do-pass recommendation, and we also have a second. And I'll, I'll call the role as I see you arbitrarily aligned on my screen. Councilmember Scannellurri.
Yes.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Abstain.
Councilmember Volin.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Council, President Sims.
Yes.
Councilmember Sandberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Flaherty.
Abstain.
And Councilmember Rosenbarger.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Thank you, Mr. Zodi. We have a recommendation of seven zero two.
Thank you all for bringing us tonight.
You as well.
Thank you, you too.
We will now go to the budget for Economic and Sustainable Development. And is Mr. Crowley here? Hi, Mr. Crowley. There you are. Are you ready to begin?
I am. Let me share my screen. Can you see that? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, I'm ready when you are.
Yes, proceed.
Good evening, council members. I'm Alex Crowley, Director of Economic and Sustainable Development, or ESD. Thank you for the opportunity to present the department's 2022 budget for your consideration and to the mayor's office and the controller team for their help with our budget. This evening, I will summarize some recent accomplishments, highlight key initiatives for 2022, point to specific funding changes for 2022, and in conclusion, I will summarize our 2022 Recover Forward Phase Three, or American Rescue Plan Act requests. I welcome your questions at the end of the presentation. Why we exist. The department's mission is fundamentally to cultivate a resilient community built on shared prosperity, inclusive economic opportunity, environmental stewardship, and a thriving arts and culture ecosystem. In other words, we work to enhance the quality of life for all residents, especially underserved populations in Bloomington. To accomplish our goals, our small team depends on myriad partners inside and outside the city. They're too numerous to list, but we cannot do our work without them, and we very much appreciate those strong partnerships. Additionally, we leverage a number of funding sources that fall outside of the ESD general fund budget, including tax increment financing, bonds, local incentives, grant funding, and other state and federal funding sources. The funding request you'll see this evening includes the 2022 ESD general fund budget and the 2022 American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, proposed. My colleagues in ESD include five highly capable, motivated, and talented individuals, each with their distinct role supporting ESDs in the administration's priorities. They are Rachel Byer, local food coordinator, a three-year USDA grant position that ends this year; Lauren Clemmons, formerly Lauren Travis, now married, Assistant Director of Sustainability; Kaiza Goodman, Special Project Manager; Jane Cooper Smith, Assistant Director for Small Business Development; and Martina Patrick, Customer Relationships, Relations Representative. In addition to this group, we have two vacancies in the department. The first is the Assistant Director for the Arts. We expect this position to be filled September seventh, and we will introduce Sean Starwitz's replacement to you at that time, and the Transportation Demand Management position for which a second search is currently underway and that we expect to fill by early November. Our areas of concentration are sustainability, including environmental sustainability, economic sustainability and equity, support for arts and culture, entrepreneurship and small business support, as well as more extensive economic development projects. ESD is a small team that more often than not finds itself in the thick of and often leading some of the administration's most visible priorities. It's my distinct honor to serve alongside these remarkable individuals. Before I get into the details of our 2021 accomplishments and our proposed 2022 budgets, I'd like to frame the moment we're in as a community, country, and world, and how that informs not just what ESD has been doing in 2020 and 2021, but also how we've, we've designed our plans for 2022 and beyond. First, to state the obvious, we are pleased to find ourselves in a national political environment that is substantially different and largely better than what I presented to you last year. While we are still somewhat uncertain about the trajectory of the pandemic, the arrival of vaccines, many of them incidentally made right here in Bloomington, and substantial state and federal funding support, both for the local public sector and the local private sector, have helped stabilize what was a chaotic and uncertain moment a year ago. Having said this, however, the pandemic, climate impacts, and continued disparities in access to economic, educational, and quality-of-life opportunities among certain populations continue to have a significant impact on the people of Bloomington. These problems are real. They are hurting a lot of our people, and they are holding back our community. So as we review a sample of our recent accomplishments and our 2022 budget proposals, it should be no surprise that we've continued to spend our time and resources with your critical support, focused on the impact of COVID, while at the same time delivering key 2021 goals to help our community advance itself well into the future. I'll start with some arts and culture accomplishments. As you know, this, late last year, the city reacquired the John Waldron's Art Center from Ivy Tech. Mayor Hamilton convened a task force to lead a public engagement strategy, including a request for proposals for ongoing management of the facility. While a lot of work remains to be done to prepare the facility for its opening in January, we are largely done with the short-term public engagement process. In addition, we continue to deliver multiple public art projects, including the State Road Forty-Six Paper Pavilions Project and four Significant One Percent for the Arts projects. And working with the Bloomington Arts Commission, we advanced Bloomington's Public Art Master Plan. We've been ushering through a number of arts grant programs, including both Bloomington Arts Commission and Bloomington Urban Enterprise Association grants covering both operating and programming support to help our arts community stabilize and reemerge following a devastating eighteen months. Thank you for your significant ongoing support of the arts community through incremental Recover Forward and BAC grant funding. In the area of sustainability, working from the Sustainability Action Plan and Climate Action Plan, two important documents that provide a roadmap for our sustainability activities. Some highlights from 2021 thus far include the development of communication tools to educate the public on the local effects of climate change. This includes development of a local climate dashboard and current work standing up an engagement tool to help residents understand individual actions they can take. We've stood up several significant programs to help residents and local organizations optimize weatherization and energy efficiency for their buildings and homes, working with CDFI-friendly Bloomington and other organizations to leverage funding. Efforts in transportation demand management are underway. We decided to go back to market with a job search for the position following an unsuccessful initial search. This is an important program, and we want a great team member to lead it. In the meantime, we're also working with a consultant to implement 2021 goals of the TDM plan to keep things on schedule. And finally, we supported the development of the Rose Hill Farm Stop to augment the marketplace for local food. This is an important additional resource to achieve the long-term goal of increasing the market share of local food, and it adds another point of sale to the growing number of farmers' markets and farm-to-table programs already helping Bloomington access locally-produced food. In the area of business relations and development, and with council's substantial support, we've continued our work to help the local business community muscle through the negative impacts of the pandemic, including funding of a number of skills training programs, leveraging partnerships with the mill and Ivy Tech, among others. We've implemented continuations of Recover Forward programs, helping underserved communities and some of our more vulnerable residents re-enter the workforce, including the Employability Job Skill Training Program pictured here. We've continued to support and have expanded efforts to provide local businesses with outdoor infrastructure to help stimulating, stimulate ongoing commercial activity as the pandemic has waxed and waned during the course of the year. And all the while, we're working to improve the platforms through which businesses can access ESD and city services, including licensing and other programs, to improve our ability to support their success. Finally, ESD has helped lead some important long-term economic development projects. These include working on a potential Economic Development Administration grant to fund a Trades District Technology Center to build on the success of the mill and support companies as they commercialize their next-generation products. If awarded, this would be a significant federal investment in the future of Bloomington. ESD continues to support the development of critically-important affordable housing initiatives, one of Mayor Hamilton's top priorities. We're helping to restart momentum at the Trades District following the disruption of commercial office space during the pandemic and are making important strides to activate private investment in that innovation district. And we're deeply immersed in preparations for the redevelopment of the current twenty-four-acre IU Health Hospital site, a once-in-a-century project that will create significant housing and other opportunities in Bloomington for decades to come. So as you see, while certainly COVID continues to consume some of our resources, we remain as focused as possible on long-term goals as we progress through 2021. Turning now to 2022 and some key budget initiatives detailed in your budget memo. Starting with arts and culture support, Bloomington's rich landscape of cultural assets has been put to an extreme test over the past year and a half, underscoring the fact that many of these cultural assets are living hand-to-mouth even under normal circumstances. Our department proposes to redouble our efforts to buttress these many organizations directly and indirectly, whether through the arts facilities we support or grants and direct commissions to our local artists and to the many organizations that work each day to make our lives better. Our focus in 2022 includes direct support for the Waldron and the Buzzkirk-Chumley Theater, two critical arts facilities supporting the community. As I mentioned earlier, we intend to reopen the Waldron in January 2022, I'm sorry, yeah, 2022, and help support its ongoing viability. We're excited to work with the BCT to help them celebrate their centennial and which will hopefully thrive as it is reactivated for local, regional, and national programming. We will focus on the Bloomington Entertainment and Arts District, or BEED, including helping to cultivate festivals and cultural events within it, many of which were canceled last year due to, due to health concerns. Our growing portfolio of public art will require the establishment of a formal maintenance program to establish its long-term sustainability. And not unrelated to that, we intend to update the One Percent for the Arts program, the first in the state of Indiana when originally established, to keep it fresh and deliver important arts infrastructure to the community. Finally, we propose to support ongoing and significant grant funding in 2022 as the arts community continues to rebuild its capabilities. Our focus on sustainability, with particular emphasis on the risks of climate change to our most vulnerable populations, carries forward significant 2021 funding into 2022, especially with ARPA investments. The pandemic has helped, has exposed in stark relief the long-term impacts of climate change, especially how exposed the most vulnerable populations are. Our 2022 budget therefore, for further focuses our efforts to support them and the community as a whole with an emphasis on underserved and vulnerable populations in managing climate hazards, finding efficiencies and diversification of energy sources, increasing access to food, especially locally-grown food, and supporting alternative means of transportation. Our guiding document will be the Climate Action Plan, the first such document developed by and for Bloomington, which, thanks to the stewardship of Lauren Clemmons, was created during the pandemic. As you know, the document is a ten-year plan that prioritizes actions and helps us organize to leverage resources for the greatest return. Because the built environment and energy use is one of the most significant contributors to our greenhouse gas footprint, we will be focused in 2022 on that important sector and are proposing significant effort behind energy efficiency and solar projects. We will also address city fleet replacements and composting support for some of the community's larger generators of organic waste. Our plan for 2022 will also include continuing efforts in support of local growers and the local food artisan economy, as well as TDM program development and investment as proposed in the TDM plan. Should be noted, what you see represented in ESD's budget only scratches the surface of the sustainability investments the ESD team and our city colleagues make across city operations and the community. We look forward to providing you a thorough review of city investments and actions during our Sustainability and Climate Action Plan update presentations currently scheduled for October. COVID has shone a light on the frailty of our local, small, and mid-sized business ecosystem, including our dependence on students and the university community to fuel many of our downtown businesses. With your help, which the community very much appreciates, we've been nimble and responsive thus far to address some of the weaknesses. But significant work remains to be done. In 2022, this will include continued programs to support workforce development, especially among underemployed and more vulnerable community members, and continuing to shepherd local incentives and other funding toward building up critically-important workforce and affordable housing stock. It will include developing a long-term plan for Kirkwood and other parts of the downtown to build upon the current momentum of outdoor commercial opportunities. And it will include further supporting entrepreneurship and small business development, which will both help to reposition Bloomington for the new economy while also creating employment opportunities for future generations. And we will work with local partners to help further direct community purchasing toward local businesses. And finally, we'll be supporting, in some cases, leading, major economic development investments to position Bloomington for economic strength for the next decade. These include leveraging external funds, including ARPA and the state's $500 million Regional Economic Acceleration and Development Initiative, or READY. We will also work closely with Bloomington Economic Development Corporation to help them develop a comprehensive economic development strategy to align the community on a common vision for the future of Bloomington's economy. We also feel we can have a significant role, whether through the Trades District or other projects, to deliberately attract traded-sector employers of a meaningful size that align with our community's interests and needs, bringing capital into our market from the outside. We set a goal to attract at least one such company in 2022. And last and certainly not least, should the EDA grant be awarded, the department will be heavily involved in the development of the Trades District Technology Center to support commercialization efforts. Turning now to some specific budget changes for 2022. As we did in the 2021 budget process, we've separated out the ESD general fund budget request from the 2022 Recover Forward or ARPA funding request. Let me begin with some changes in the 2022 ESD general fund budget. The Department of Economic and Sustainable Development's general fund budget request is $1.12 million. This is an increase of one point, a decrease, I'm sorry, of 1.05 million, or forty-eight percent from 2021. The year-over-year decrease is largely due to the fact that comparable 2021 amounts The year over year decrease is largely due to the fact that comparable 2021 amounts included Recover Forward funding. The category one personals personnel services request is $657,000, which is virtually no change from 2021. 2022 wage increases are offset by the reduction in 2021. Of 2021 temporary salaries. You note that personal costs represent roughly half the department's operating budget. In category two, which is for supplies. Our 2022 request is $7,900, which is a decrease of 29,000 or 79% from 2021. This is driven largely by other supplies, which includes removal of $25,000. For a one time 2021 zero waste implementation funding line. And category three's request is $457,000, which is a decrease from 2021 of 1.02 million or 69%. Again, 2021 amounts include Recover Forward funding. In 2022, significant changes include dues and subscriptions where the request is approximately $70,000. An increase of $22,000 or 47.7% from last year. Including $10,000 for a climate solutions engagement platform to increase education about climate solutions, which is a goal. From the Sustainability Action Plan. And $20,000 for customer relationship management platform, a recommendation from the ESD organizational assessment. And these are offset by other miscellaneous reductions. You have all the detailed information in your budget packet. Here's a summary of the net impacts of our 2022 general fund budget and comparisons over the previous years. Again, this is a subtotal associated with ESD's general fund budget excluding 2022 Recover Forward Investments. Let me now turn to Recover Forward for ARPA or ARPA for 2022. We appreciate your recent approval of the 2021 ARPA funding and our department is already beginning to implement programs in support of that initial amount of investment. ESD has been tasked with managing additionally proposed 2022 Recover Forward programs and funding. With your approval totaling 1.425 million dollars. As you'll see here, much of that investment is a continuation of successful 2021 Recover Forward programs. We're proposing 1.07 million to support those 2021 Recover Forward initiatives that are making the most direct impact. $175,000 to support revitalization of Bloomington's critical arts community. And $185,000 in support of the Waldron and Buzzkirk Chumley Theater. Within the 1.07 million of Recover Forward program extensions, we're proposing $25,000 for retail support. $130,000 for entrepreneurship and small business program support. $750,000 to fund Climate Action Plan investments. $85,000 to continue local food programming. And $75,000 to augment the ESD general fund budget request for additional TDM program support. And as you'll see, the $185,000 in Waldron and BCT support includes funding to cover 2022 work. On an arts facility feasibility study and $135,000 for the BCT. Together with $115,000 in BCT support in 2021, that will mean the city will be investing in additional quarter million dollars total. In the BCT for its centennial, which is on top of the existing annual budget funding commitments. Thank you again for your time and attention this evening. Thank you for your support. Of recent requests that we've made to help our community during these trying times. ESD is determined to help the community emerge stronger than before and confident that the people of Bloomington, all of us together. Will continue to work hard and support one another as we plan for and invest in the future. I'm pleased to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Crowley. We'll go to council now for questions, first round. Who would like to begin? Councilmember Rosenbarger and then Flaherty.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Crowley for that presentation. Very helpful. I have a few questions, so I'll probably go into different rounds, but you talked a little bit about. Composting, can you give more detail about the plan for 2022?
Yeah, I mean, I can, at a high level, we are trying to, I mean, this is, this is actually true of a lot of different programs, but we're trying to really. Get the biggest bang for the investment we're making. And in the case of composting. While certainly there, you know, there's residential opportunities and 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 long term plans to 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 take a harder look at that. The early victory, the substantial victories can be can be from. Businesses, especially restaurants in the downtown, larger generators of compost. And trying to understand what some of the challenges are that they are facing in doing that successfully. Trying to figure out what the city can do to help facilitate that. So what we're doing is in that case and many others, we're zeroing in on on trying to get. You know, scale and try to get substantial movement on an issue like composting. Certain, you know, we've tried some residential stuff and and that there's, there's, there's a role for that at some point. What we want to do is really focus our attention on on areas where we can get, try to get the biggest return.
Thank you. And so we don't pick up trash from businesses, right? So that, are you looking at then starting just something totally separate for collecting this?
No, it's really to try to try to figure out what the problem is and why that's not being done successfully right now. Why composting is not being done in the current streams of of, you know. Waste removal that's happening from from restaurants and and then what is it that the city can do? Including potentially standing up a program to help with that, that that can help facilitate that more effectively.
I see. So it's not starting a program, it's just asking businesses why they're not composting.
Well, you have to start with that to understand what what's going on. And then and then the question is, what is the program that can help to overcome the hurdle that's in place?
Okay, thank you. I'll save other topics for my next round. Thank you.
Councilmember Flaherty.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Crowley for the presentation. First, I noticed there was a, I think a discrepancy between your presentation on the ARPA funds and the budget memo. It looked like maybe it is coming from 750K in the presentation allocated to Climate Action Plan investments and only 500K listed. In the budget memo, I wanted to clarify that and ask which is which is correct. That's page nine of the budget memo.
That memo has been updated and we will be sending that to the council office to reflect what Mr. Crowley presented this evening.
Okay, thank you. So following up a little bit about that, are those Climate Action Plan investments, the 750K? In phase three or forward, are those unspecified at this point, but will be some sort of phase one programs?
Well, we have some detail underlying what it is that we want to be doing and how we want to invest some of the some of the Recover Forward. Categories of funding, right? So in the case of of, you know, climate related investments. We have, as you probably know, three. Existing SEAL programs, which is solar energy and efficiency loan programs, one for nonprofits. One for residential and then there's multifamily and we want to expand that to the commercial, to the business world. So there's, there's some some amount of investment that we want to put against those efforts. And so that's kind of how we've looked at that sub package, if you will, of ARPA, ARPA funding. And distributed it according to to that plan. Now, some of these programs are brand new this year, so we are testing them out or proving them out right now. We will only double down and reinvest in programs that are proving successful. We're seeing early successes right now in in those. And and then there's the, you know, the Bloomington, the BG HIP, we call it, which is the the new programs being set up for for residential. And again, that's very early in its development, but if that proves itself also successful, then we'd like to double down on that as well.
Green home improvement program, is that right?
Yes.
But what would doubling down on that mean actually? Would, I know it's, I believe only available to homeowners at this point, and that kind of follows up on a council, council member Rosenberger question from earlier. Would there be a way to expand that to small scale rental properties and things like that so that? They can also benefit from efficiency improvements renters?
That's a possibility. We do have a SEAL program that that really works on more on the multifamily side, so it's a little bit of a different approach. So, I mean, where that where a small scale. You know, multiplex owner, maybe if you want to call it that, would fall, you know, we could try to decide what makes most sense depending on what their needs are, but but that's not out of the realm of possibility.
Okay, or even just any single family rented home of which we have many, but yes, thank you. Appreciate it.
Additional questions? Councilmember Sandberg and then Scimbalory.
Hi, Mr. Crowley. I was wondering if you could give us some status report on where we are in determining who the third party management of the Waldron will be. Are we any closer to identifying that team?
We have received one response from the RFQ process and that closed just a week and a half ago. So needless to say, we've been a little bit consumed with budget preparation, so. I've glanced through the response. We need to dive in. I've communicated with them that we will be doing that shortly. And and really dive into the details of their proposal. So, you know, it's good that we got one. And and now the now the heavy work of of trying to figure out what it looks like.
Yes, and I would assume that that third party will be heavily invested in. Getting the Waldron ready for reopening of seasons and and use for the Waldron starting in January, correct?
They will certainly invest heavily in the Waldron. A lot of the work that's being done right now is is work that the the. Task force uncovered. It's about half a million dollars that was set aside in Recover Forward funding. So we are actually investing that that amount into preparing the facility for reopening. That includes things like HVAC, windows, there's some some basic blocking and tackling. But but what we will do, and we're also taking reservations for the fall, so we're, I'm sorry, the spring of 2022. So because people are trying to figure out what their seasons are going to look like. So we're doing some of that advanced work. What we hope to be able to do is if if we can come to an agreement, the mutually beneficial agreement, hand that off. To the to the management group and then they would take it from there.
Right, thank you very much. Is WFHB again a part of this proposal or do you not? Can you not reveal a lot of what's in that?
We we have continued to support WFHB's use of of their space. You know, you probably know that that benefits them from a funding perspective. We're very aware of that and I think we've got a good understanding with them right now. And and then beyond that, in terms of what the the next phase will look like. You know, we just have to dig into that a little bit more.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Scimbalory.
Yes, thank you. Kind of some scattershot questions. What are the next steps in the timetable for the art center feasibility study? What will that, what what's going to happen in the next few months?
I think it's to engage a, first of all, you know, sort of make sure that it's the the right questions being asked, engaged a third party to help us do it. That'll probably roll into 2022 somewhat. And the idea is.
Have you issued an RFP yet for that or no?
No.
Okay.
And the the, you know, the the outcome of that hopefully is is really to get a sense as to whether or not, number one. The community can afford and also can use a, you know, an art center that that is built for that purpose. As you know, a lot of the facilities that are being used around town right now for for art centers. For arts activities, performing arts, et cetera. Are are kind of retrofit from another use. And so it's, you know, it's always a little bit complicated to stand something up in them.
Thank you. You mentioned a local shopping incentive program. How does that work? That's an interesting idea. What does that look like?
Well, you know, there are a lot of different ways to do that. There there are third parties that do it. There are software products. There are. You know, more kind of purchase card approaches. There are other incentive structures that that really, you know, you can gamify that. So we we've been looking at a couple of them. And we are working closely with some of our partners to understand what's the, you know, what's the best one, what's going to yield the best results. And, you know, there's a balance between. There's a complication to to the retailer or the, you know, the restaurant or whomever. And we're sensitive to that, so we want to impose something on them that is onerous. And and then sort of, you know, eliminate the benefit that they would get from it. So so it's a little bit. You know, trying to thread a needle here, but but we think that there's certainly a lot of models out there we can tap into.
Well, and it sounds like it's worth asking the questions anyway, so. The Return to Work Program, could you talk more about how that's going and what kind of numbers we're seeing and what kind of placement rates?
Well, you know, that is a kind of broad category because there there are sort of variety of different programs that are being, you know. Worked on. So maybe, I mean, I, you know, I think broadly speaking. You know, you think of uptraining, you think of training people to come into the workforce right away. And maybe the simplest thing, given some of the time constraints here is to, we can, we can publish for you and for everybody. You know, the the updated data related to those. I think some early data was was published recently as part of the Recover Forward update document. I think that's probably needs a little refreshing because it's been probably a month or two since then. But why don't I, why don't I follow up with you and and send through our latest information for that?
Great. And I have one more on Kirkwood Avenue, but I'll hold that. So thank you.
Okay, we're on first round of questions for economic and sustainable development budget. Who would like to go next? Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, I wanted to ask about implementation of the Transportation Demand Management Plan. I know it's been delayed because the TDM position has not been fulfilled yet, but I assume it'll move forward in 22. And one recommendation from that plan is a parking cash out program for major employers and of course, City of Bloomington is a major employer. So, once again, I ask. Why do we not have a parking cash out plan in our budget for 2022?
So let me address a couple of points there. You know, we we on the on the position that we've been trying to fill, I think I mentioned, we really want to get a strong person in there and. And so it's important for us to to work hard to do that. The the plan is actually not really fallen that far behind. One of the challenges with TDM is the the landscape has changed dramatically since since the plan was published. And I think the industry as a whole is is trying to figure out what the implications are moving forward. So one of the steps, one of the first steps in the plan is to is to really go out and do some surveying to try to figure out what's, what is the new landscape? Are we going to kind of snap back to what we were before or is there a new normal? And we have to establish that baseline rather than sort of blindly following a plan that predated the pandemic. So so that's, that's really the first important step that we have to do. Regarding the cash out program, I mean, it, you know, as you know, significant implications from a cost perspective. And and also fundamentally, it's it's a, it's kind of an HR benefit question as much as anything, right? It's, it's, it's certainly something worth exploring. But but in the end, you know, it's, 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 it's a, you know, it's, it's a challenge to make sure that it's designed correctly. That it fits within what the the benefits structures for employees at the city. Would be, you know, seeing and so I, you know, it's on our horizon. It's definitely something that we want to look at and work with our fellow departments on. But it's, I don't think it's as easy as just kind of saying, well, it was in the plan, let's go do it. I think it it just needs a lot of due diligence before we implement something like that.
Thank you. We've been asking for it for years, so there's been plenty of time for that, but getting it to comment here. So thank you for your your response.
Okay, we're on first round of questions and I think some of you haven't asked any. Would like to take a bite? Not yet. Okay, I'll, I'll do that. I've got a couple, but let's start with Mr. Crowley. Very enthused, you know, we were talking about local food economy for a long time and. Stuff is really moving forward. I'm really happy to see the farm stop. You know, we we had in mind a food hub initially and we weren't quite ready to take that plunge, but it looks like the farm stop is up and running. And this is a great place to shore up options for farmers and customers. How is that going? Could you tell us a little bit about?
Well, it's just open, right? It's sort of not even officially open because there's, they're working through kind of the processes and and. And and there's a fair amount of work to do there. I think, you know, on the whole. It's poised for success. There are definitely some challenges that are both directly. You know, startup related, you know, as as anybody who's who started up a business knows, it's, it's an incredibly heavy lift. And and in this case, it was done by a, you know, volunteer board and of of growers in the midst of a growing season. Not to mention the fact that they were running into supply chain issues that were tied to the pandemic, the. The, you know, refrigeration was backed up. There was just a whole bunch of, I mean, it's just a very complicated thing, which is what in effect delayed it a little bit longer than we would have liked. And had it, had it kind of opened its doors in the midst of the peak growing season. I think there's work that the group can do to be, to reach out more aggressively and engage more aggressively with different parts of the community that may or may not fully understand the mission they have. And and so I think that kind of work lies ahead and is really important work, both in its own right and also for the success of the farm stop. And so I, you know, I think that the, the, the benefit hopefully is pretty clear, which is it creates an additional marketplace that is actually open, you know, seven days a week for a little bit more continuity and predictability of, of, of demand from the grower community. And and then, you know, you mentioned the, the food hub. What it also can evolve into is working on wholesaling to institutional, institutional buyers and preparing growers to be able to do that in a, in a controlled environment. I would encourage everybody to go stop by and check it out. See if you can get yourself a tour of the facility. The back room has a little commercial kitchen area that can be used by different parties. So there's just a lot of good stuff happening. It just needs, you know, it just needs a little time to settle in and, 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 you know, and get some momentum.
Great. Thank you for that. Yeah, the commercial buyers are the big, the big step. And I was just going to say, you know, maybe downtown compost, you could have farmers arrive with product and leave with compost. Something to consider. Let's see, we're on second round questions now. Councilmember Flaherty, then Scimbaluri, then Piedmont Smith.
Sure. Thank you. I wanted to bring up some more specific details from the Climate Action Plan. So as you know, well, of course, the plan has implementation phases, including implementation phase one, which is correlated with a lot of actions associated with. That's a one to two-year initiation timeline from when the plan's approved, which was, I believe, April of 2021. So end of 2022 takes us through most of that two-year implementation phase timeline. Just two of the programs that are phase one programs include create a pilot food scraps bag, pilot program to test food scraps, composting, collecting across restaurant, commercial and residential customer base. Another is establish a City of Bloomington Employee Parking Cash Out Benefit Program, alternate commute modes. And there's a lot of other examples like this, but I bring up those two because they both been mentioned by council members this evening as priorities. And I don't, it sounds like we're not pursuing them. We're thinking about it. But how many, how many phase one projects would you say we're actually going to meet within that timeline or phase one actions of the plan? Do you have any estimate of a percentage?
Well, it's a good question. So, you know, we can get into it. I've got a minute 40 seconds left, so it's gonna be hard to answer it. But but I think, you know, we are setting up a meeting with you to do it with the council as a whole to do a deep dive and into all of those steps, you know, in a month or two. You know, I think you may have misconstrued my commitment to the, for example, the cash out. It's, we're not just thinking about it, sitting around, just thinking about it. It is something we intend to pursue. I think the point that I want to make is, and this is true of the, of the Climate Action Plan overall, is ESD is not single-handedly delivering every single one of these things. This takes internal partnerships. It takes external partnerships. And, you know, they are important, but on the other hand, so is the holistic view of, in the case of, of the cash, cash out that the, you know, it's important to balance that in the, in the entire benefit structure. We don't want to rush into something and have it blow up in our face because we didn't think through the repercussions of doing that. So, you know, a lot of the activities that are laid out in the plan are laid out as a, you know, they literally came from ideas that can, you know, from other cities. In this case, we've already thought of it as well. But, you know, we put them in there with the intent to pursue them. But the plan is also needs to be flexible. I think one of the, one of the risks is that, you know, people say, wait, wait, wait a minute. You know, page seven said you would do X. Well, you know, things, things change. I mean, you know, examples that the TDM situation completely turned on its head. So I think we need to be flexible. We need to understand. We need to be very clear with, with all of you and with the community, what it is that we intend to pursue and how we intend to pursue it and fully vet it. And hopefully we, we are able to implement these things. But in some cases, I think we have to prepare for the fact that we won't.
Thank you.
Councilmember Scimbaluri?
Yes, thank you. Single question I get asked most frequently. What's going on with Kirkwood Avenue? Will it stay that way? Are they going to put up more lights? So could you just talk a little bit about what feedback you've gotten from the public, from local merchants? And what's next?
Sure.
For that conversation?
So Kirkwood, so I'll talk to the lights. The lights were, I mean, it's kind of a lovely story, right? The lights are really just totally bootstrapped. We, you know, we wanted to see some lights go up there. We didn't have a lot of money to do it. We asked Cassidy Electric to come up with a creative idea and they did. And we were literally, you know, stealing stones from CBU and a pipe from, you know, Cassidy. And the whole thing was just kind of crazy, but, but it turned out okay. And so I think generally speaking, people really like those. We've just added lights on the, you may know, on the west side of Kirk, you know, right at Walnut over that, that half block. So now we've got it on one and a half blocks. And that's the end of the plan for this year. In terms of Kirkwood overall, one of the things I mentioned in the presentation is that we really want to take a hard look at, what does it look like for Kirkwood to be closed in the future? And it's, it's, it's very appealing. I think if, if we had suggested that a couple of years ago, people might have freaked out. But but now that they can visualize it and are able to go out and, 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 you know, eat out there, I think people are sort of understanding that vision and that, that there's a real possibility of doing it. So obviously, it's a lot of, it's a lot of change and we have to work through everything from, you know, access for the fire department, you know, what does it mean for alleys, all of deliveries? I mean, there's a lot of stuff to be worked through on it. But the long-term goal that I hope we can pursue is one where ultimately that becomes a pedestrian only street. What it might mean for, you know, a year or two is a, is a transition to it. So, you know, I don't know exactly what that looked like, but you can imagine using bollards again for next year and possibly the year after, but maybe establishing things like murals on the street to kind of visually let people know, you know, what, what's happening. We have to do some work to really understand all of the details of what it would take to close that ultimately and, and build a good plan for it.
And thank you. And am I remembering correctly that closing that, closing those sections permanently isn't just a City of Bloomington decision? Aren't there state statutes involved in that somehow or am I imagining that?
They're very, there may be. And I would imagine maybe in public safety, that's where you could see a lot of that coming into being. But, you know, again, that's one of the details we've got to work through.
Look forward to seeing what's next. Thank you.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Crowley, you mentioned that with the TDM plan, a lot of strategies and approaches have changed since the pandemic started. And I think the same could be said for Convention Center expansion. Is, is the administration still planning to, to move ahead with the county on the expansion of the Convention Center? Or has there an effort to reevaluate that project? What's the latest?
So I'm not privy to all the discussions, but my understanding is that generally speaking, that's still a goal that we want to pursue. It certainly timeframes have changed and, you know, possibly other elements of it. You know, the Convention Center is, is meant to really fill, I'd mentioned in my presentation that we're very dependent on tourism, on the tourist economy in Bloomington. And, you know, what that means literally is hotel rooms are packed over the weekends, on football weekends. And then there, you know, there's almost nobody in them during the week. And you've got these weird peaks and valleys that happen. And then you've got seasonal peaks and valleys. What a Convention Center does helps to fill those in. It brings people into town on essentially the off tourism period. So Monday through Thursday, conventions can fill in hospital, not hospital, hotel occupancy. It can help to stabilize, you know, the gyrations that restaurants feel from, from a lot of usage to nothing. And so, you know, I think the basic premise of it, it still makes sense in an economy like ours that is so flush on, on certain weekends and periods of the year, and then relatively weaker in other parts of the week and of the year. A Convention Center helps to stabilize that and really rise, you know, create an additional influx of, of spending in Bloomington, which helps everybody.
But I guess my question was about reevaluating it in light of the pandemic. I mean, people have become experts in Zoom and conducting conferences online rather than in person. So I wonder if there's going to be as much demand for convention space as pre-pandemic.
Yeah, I mean, you know, that's, it's, I think the jury's still out. We have some visibility. We have businesses in town, for example, that are in the business travel marketplace and, and, and product offering, or at least supporting it. You know, that's taking us a longer time to come back. They are seeing it grow. And, you know, there's some speculation. You read articles all over the place. There's some speculation that people are going to not only come back, but come back in earnest because they're so desperate to go see other people having been locked in their basements for two years. So I think the jury's out. Honestly, it's, it's a little hard to tell where that's headed. I, you know, probably never at the exact same level as pre-pandemic because as you say, you know, we've gotten used to some, some virtual interactions. But, you know, you're starting to see signs of people starting to travel a lot in business. And, and, and then again, this kind of pent up demand for meeting people in person now. You know, hopefully, hopefully we get out of this thing in the next three, four months, but, but, or, you know, year. But certainly the Convention Center would not be coming online for many years to come.
And do you see any contradiction between our climate goals as a society and expanding our Convention Center?
Not really. People will travel. You know, I think, you know, it's, it's what we want to do is be as effective as possible in ushering people in in the most, you know, non-impactful way from a greenhouse gas perspective. But people want to get together. I mean, it's human nature. And so I think, I think you just have to balance those two and find the right answer for it.
Thank you.
Additional questions from council for Mr. Crowley? Councilmember Flaherty, do you have your hand up?
Sorry, I do. The blur.
It's a blur, yes.
That's a third round for me. So I don't know if there were, if there were other second round first.
Well, I didn't see any other takers, so I'm going to go with you.
Sure. I just wanted to keep following up a little bit about the implementation of the Climate Action Plan. It's mentioned a 10-year timeline that the goal is to achieve actions by 2030, but we have three phases, a one, one to three year, sorry, for phase one, two to five year for phase two, and four to eight year window for phase three. I was wondering if there's action, the, the plan is organized in different categories, of course, and then goals, strategies, actions, and this sort of hierarchy. The actions are sort of the detailed steps, programs, for instance, that I mentioned a couple of earlier. Do you have any sense, Mr. Crowley, of how many actions were able to implement in a year or that we plan to implement in 2022?
Yeah, I mean, look, we're going through that exercise right now. Needless to say, you know, the, the, the period since the publishing, which was just last year of that plan, right? So, so I mean, it's just, it's, it's barely born, right? And it stretches out into the distance. It's been a complicated several months leading up to today in terms of stuff that the department's been focused on. So, I mean, we're, we're right now evaluating. And that's why we wanted to sit down with all of you and say, all right, this is our assessment. Here, here's what, first of all, is underway. And then there is a lot of stuff underway from it. Here's where we think we can be tracking against the goals as they originally laid out. Here's what we believe should be sort of a change, you know, prioritization as needed and what we want to accomplish. And then, and then, you know, as I mentioned, there's, there's a dashboard and, and really publishing and tracking how, how we are performing against that. And when I say we, I think it's we, all of us, right? All of us in the community. Because again, you know, the, the, the plan does not say, okay, one department is in charge of solving this entire thing on behalf of the entire community, nor frankly, is the city exclusively in charge of it. It's really a communal effort. And so I think, I think some of that work, you know, will, will require us to be more heavily engaged than we've been able to be with, with community partners as they reemerge and start to refocus on this. But, you know, we look forward to sitting down with you and really taking you through that and detailing that out for you.
Well, will some of that information be available during this budget cycle? I, I think for me, it probably has budget implications. So it's a little disappointing that it's coming in October.
Yeah, I mean, I think part of it is the timing of what we're trying to, when we want to kind of present to you is hopefully in advance of, of, of final budget decisions. So yes, we are trying to time it so that it fits within this budget cycle. And, you know, if there's interim information that becomes available that we can share, we're happy to do that as soon as it's available.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on. Councilmember Rosenbarger and then Smith.
Thank you very much. Can you talk about a little more detail on the incentives to reduce single occupancy vehicle use, especially downtown?
Yeah. So, I mean, there are a couple of different, so there's incentives, there's disincentives, there's communication, right? Those are sort of the three pillars of what you can do to try to get people to change their behavior. So, you know, incentives include positive ways of getting people to do it. You know, instituting programs or helping to design and, and helping employers to implement programs where people migrate from single occupancy vehicle commuting. You know, there's, we're seeing this at the city. Telework is actually a positive, has a positive effect on single, single occupancy commuting. So, you know, the establishment of telework as a viable option, again, was really not embraced very aggressively by certainly the city and I think some employers, but it's become much more viable and people understand a little bit better coming through the pandemic. So you've got that kind of stuff on the positive, on the negative. You know, cost of parking, whether, you know, as we discussed earlier, employee cost or cost of parking downtown. So that, you know, looking at that and trying to understand what are the dynamics and how do we, you know, can we adjust parking rates to disincentivize people? That, that is certainly something that we would want to look at. And then there's communication. There are a lot of people who don't really understand what the options are. And, you know, how frankly pleasant and easy pre-pandemic it was to, to take the bus. And, you know, so, you know, programs that try to really lay that out for people, software products, you know, that, that can help. Other incentives are things like, you know, guaranteed ride home. So, you know, a lot of, a lot of people push back on the idea of not bringing a car to work on the premise that they will be unexpectedly dependent on a car at some point during the day. And so that kind of program can really help to alleviate that fear and, you know, and, and create some incentive for people to try alternative means.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any plans then in 2022 to adjust the cost of parking to disincentivize people to drive downtown?
We have a lot of plans to figure out what, what the right, you know, answer to that question is. And, and so, you know, we have not, at this point, set that into budgets, but, but certainly, you know, it's a strong tool. And, and I would not leave it on the table.
Thanks.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Crowley. My question is, I don't know where to ask this, so I'm just going to ask it to you. In the comprehensive plan, it talks about neighborhood activity centers and kind of decentralizing some of the commercial activity and the commercial development. This, in my mind, would help with expenditure of carbon. It would help with the transportation demand and the complexity of that. Is there any part of your budget that is dedicated to a strategy to more fully implement neighborhood activity centers?
So I totally agree with the the premise of it and the the importance of having those and what it had, the positive effect it can have. You know, most big cities, I was just in LA literally yesterday and and, you know, they you just walk down the street and you can go get your whatever, right, from the corner store. And we don't really have that. We have a concentrated amount of activity in the downtown and you just have to schlep all the way downtown most of the time. There are places that that's not the case, but on the whole, that's where the density is. The short answer to your question is, we do not, we have not budgeted anything for a kind of strategizing of that. What what I think that the one of the big opportunities in 2022 is is the work that's being done on the hospital site and and that, you know, in effect, can become, you know, a future place for that kind of more localized commercial activity. Right now, everything's concentrated so densely in the downtown. If you can start to kind of disperse it that way, you can you could start to derive some benefits. But but the short answer is, there's nothing in my no line item in the E S D budget that says, you know, X thousands of dollars will be set up to deliver against that particular element in the comp plan.
Is that is that part of the transportation demand management position for them to look at that?
Not really. TDM is not about building infrastructure. It's about leveraging infrastructure and optimizing infrastructure that's that is being built by, whether it's engineering or, you know, designed by planning. So so the TDM effort is not meant to invest into physical things that, you know, that that yield and outcome. It's meant to look around and say, what are the assets that are in place? And how do we, how do we get those assets to work harder for us and to eliminate some of this community that's going on at a fundamental level? So I'm oversimplifying, but that's basically how to think about TDM. So, you know, TDM could be looking at maybe planning constraints on some of that development, but they would not be involved in, you know, facilitating infrastructure that would deliver.
Thank you, Mr. Crowley.
Okay, we're on round two of questions for the Economic and Sustainable Development Department's budget for 2022. Are there further questions? Councilmember Volan.
Thank you. Mr. Crowley, the we just heard an announcement from Indianapolis that Indigo has just funded this gotten funding for its second B R T line, the purple line, to the tune of $80 million. Is something like a B R T line in Bloomington? The kind of thing that would be your jurisdiction or do you see it as purely Bloomington Transit jurisdiction?
Well, you know, as I was saying before, the and by my jurisdiction, you I think you're
Your department's your department's bailiwick.
I mean, only insofar as, you know, if it is a helpful and an important investment, we will certainly be advocating for it, will be supporting it. It's not something that we would deliver by any means. And it's not infrastructure that, I mean, it's not within our bailiwick at all to to set up transit lines. But on the other hand, we do get heavily involved in in decisions that are being made by other departments. We advocate for them and we, I personally think, you know, it'd be really interesting to take a look at what that what that might do for us. And
Oh, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Well, so a similar question is, we were just hearing Councilmember Rosenberg asked about setting parking prices. I would ask, whose jurisdiction do you think it is? But first, let me say, do you think that that belongs in E S D? If not, what other department do you think it belongs in? And if not, among which departments do you think the price of parking in various modes should be set? Who should be setting parking prices among you?
So I think ultimately
Am I allowed to talk here?
Deputy Mayor Griffin, would you like to say something in response?
Yeah, we're getting kind of in the weeds. You're asking him questions on other departments and where things should lie. Why don't we stick to what what E S D and what they do?
With all due respect, Mr. Griffin, I think that my question is relevant and I would appreciate an answer from either you or him.
Well, yes, let's keep it to the topic at hand. So, Councilmember Volan, can you?
The question stands. Who should be setting parking prices if not E S D? You have a TDM coordinator in your department.
Yeah, so I think the I think the answer would be this, and, you know, Deputy Mayor Griffin, jump in. Ultimately, it is set by the Parking Services Group, right? That they are the ones who set parking prices. Now, they're not doing it in isolation. There's a lot of collaboration within the city between departments. And, you know, we work with them all the time on stuff and, you know, I would expect the process to involve us advocating and making the case for what that might look like, working with them to figure out how that would play out and then having them ultimately implement it because it is in in their jurisdiction.
Thank you. I'll have further questions. Appreciate it.
Very good. Council President Sims.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Crowley, for your presentation. I guess first thing I need to say is, we were talking about the Parking Cash Out Plan or Program. Is that under your purview of E S D?
I it's sort of the same answer as what I just gave Councilmember Volan. So I think I see that as being
No, 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 that's fine. Only have three minutes. So I just kind of, but you did mention that that will have to be fully vetted. You wanted to avoid any negative consequences or re or unwelcome repercussions. I guess my question is, as part of that plan, has it had to do with anything with surveying or vetting with the employees that this is going to affect most?
Well, there was a survey that was done a couple of years ago about commuting patterns and
No, 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 we more recently with our the how this plan is going to affect the folks that actually use this. Are they have they been involved and we resurveyed them within the last couple of years?
Yeah, not not since, I think, 2018. So so I think one of the first steps, as I mentioned, the TDM plan implementation would be to do surveys. I think that it would be worthwhile to do a survey of employees. You know, and some of the repercussions are there. There's some people who just, you know, can't afford to live in in Bloomington and, you know, need to need to travel in. And, you know, so you just have to balance out a lot of different interest groups and make sure that it's being done correctly. So I think a survey is is something that should happen as a first step.
No, I think you're absolutely correct. And that was some of the things that I was kind of getting at with some of the things that hadn't been discussed. Moving on to some climate mitigation strategies. And I think Bloomington is overthinking with some of the things that we're doing. I and I agree with you. I also know the commuter rate from outside counties and some of our own people who travel a lot to go away. So I guess from your, from the standpoint, I guess I'm asking you, have we had conversations on a more broader platform, more regional basis? Is it your office or who in our administration initiates those conversations, even beginning with our own county colleagues, but branching out into a more regional basis? So so that anything that we may gain in fact makes progress from that climate mitigation standpoint?
I think the short answer is that there are community partners that we would work with to do that work, the B D C being one that comes to mind. Their comprehensive economic development strategy is going to be is going to be looking regionally and looking at migration patterns for work. We also would need to engage through that process with employers to understand issues of of employee, you know, migration. And as you say, people leaving Bloomington to go work at Crane and places like that. So I I think that that, you know, certainly E S D would be involved in that, but it is not exclusively something that we would do.
Thank you. My time is up. I'll have more later.
I'll take an opportunity to ask a question. Mr. Crowley, we we've been talking for some time about growing a local farm farm food economy. And the farm stock was a big step in that direction. But we were also talking about an incubator farm as a leg up for potential growers who don't have access to land and tools and materials and so forth. Is there anything to say on that front right now? Or is that kind of shelved right now with the most of the work going to the farm stock?
What I would say is that is very much a goal of between now and the end of the year, not to build it, but to really investigate and figure out what it would take and, you know, make some early investments. We have a little money set aside for it, which we've kept dry for that. You know, I mentioned the the delays in getting the farm stop open. That's been a bit of a distraction and but but it's open now. So I think that we're in a position where we can spend some time looking at that. We have some preliminary ideas about it. We have some targeted land for it. We have some adjacent resources that can help us execute it. So there's a lot of potential upside and and possibility. We have to scope it out in in greater detail. And that's what that's, I think, the work that can be done between now and the end of the year so that we can enter 2022 and decide, okay, it is something we want to do or it's or it's not.
Okay, okay, good to know. It's still sort of you're ruminating on it. Okay, we're so at second round questions, I think, if anyone else would like to pose one. Well, Councilmember Volan, because you would you would initiate the third round. So why don't you go ahead?
Okay, thank you. Small question, is there going to be a sign on the forced to garage saying how many spaces are open at any given time?
I don't know the answer to that, but I will find out.
Great.
Once again, I'm sorry, I can I can find that out. I'll talk to parking enforcement or or Adam will be on here, I think, later on. So either way, I can get to that information.
Okay, appreciate.
But that's a that's a parking enforcement in question.
Well, you know, Mr. Griffin, I think I'm going to turn to you then because, you know, I'm trying to determine which department in the city, if not E S D, advocates for things like public transit within the cabinet. Okay, which which department in the city, if not Mr. Crowley's, should I look to for leadership when it comes to the idea like, are is Bloomington Transit exploring?
You know what, this is this is a much longer conversation and why don't we table that? And maybe you could contact me later on or I'll contact you later on. This is a off the off the air conversation, I'd imagine. Let's keep let's keep going with this.
Mr. Griffin, I would like to have to be able to at least ask a question without being told that I should. I mean, I appreciate meeting off air, but I'm trying to understand which the problem, because we've moved parking away from police and now some or rather, decision making for parking, is it in public works or is it in planning? And all of this has an economic development.
How long have you been in government? How long have you been in this government?
Good point of order.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair. I would like to ask for clarification from you as chair. My understanding of council member questions is that if we, as council members, believe the question is relevant to the topic at hand, we can ask it. If the administration feels it's not, they can decline to answer, say, would you like to, you know, have we request you ask someone else at a different time? But I I'm a little worried about
Well, I think, Mr., I think Deputy Mayor Griffin has said that. Alex Crowley's indicated that he doesn't have the information. This seems to involve multiple departments. Deputy Mayor has said that it's because of that, it's complicated. I guess we're going to hear from Public Works at some point, and so that would be another question, time to pose it. Just in the interest of, you know, keep keeping this moving, do we not have the answer that we?
No, Mr. Chair.
We don't?
No, I in fact, I don't appreciate any of this interruption or your defense of it. I mean, we are asking tough questions about the budget and about the administration manages the budget in general. Okay, and the fact that this question may seem like it, I mean, I believe that what is Mr. Crowley's charge if not economic development? Is public transit not an essential component of of economic development? Are, you know, when I ask about like, how is Indianapolis building Bus Rapid Transit? How do they have shovel ready programs to get 80 million? I mean, we're about a tenth the size of Indianapolis. Isn't public transit an economic development tool?
Okay, well, we'll take that as a rhetorical question. I think your 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 time has been utilized.
My time has been taken by other people, Mr. Chair. I'll appreciate some back.
Okay, well, let's let's move on. I think those answers will be forthcoming. I think the administration has indicated that. So are there other questions? We're on third round now. Councilmember Rosenberg and then Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Thank you very much. Director Crowley, thank you for the following up on my last question, single occupancy vehicle use. Thank you for the ideas of programs that could be implemented. I I would like to like focus that question and ask, what programs are we implementing in the 2022 budget?
So in in normal circumstances, I would say we're following the plan. The plan laid out a sequence of events. It's it's kind of sequential, it's prioritized, it's in order, right? You sort of follow through it. That would be the way that you would execute. Now, obviously, make adjustments along the way. But on the whole, a lot of that work was done as part of the TDM plan development. We are not in normal times in that a lot has changed since that plan was put together. And, you know, in speaking with Wells and Associates, which was the contractor who or the consultant that helped us develop that plan, they are very much trying to figure out what it all means. What is, you know, so so they are industry experts in TDM and they don't have an answer and they are trying to figure that out and they're doing surveys and they're doing research and they're trying to lay out, okay, what is this, what is this next five years going to look like based on what we've just gone through? So it's not as simple as me saying, oh, well, just look at the plan and we're going to do X, Y, and Z, because I think that would be short sighted. It would be short sighted to just blindly pursue a series of proposal, proposed programs implementations without going back and taking another look at what the dynamic looks like right now, doing some survey work among our population and try to figure out, does this still make sense? And if it does, we'll go after them as they've been laid out. Or does it not? In which case, we have to either restack, reorder them or think of, you know, or introduce different programs that were maybe not conceived at the time. So, you know, what we are going to be doing between now and the end of 2021 is establishing what is, you know, what what is necessary for 2022? We'll also be hiring someone to be able to manage that. So we are contracting to be able to do some of that survey and research work. And we'll have a much better idea as the as as that work is done and we get to look at what the landscape now looks like as to what is the right approach for 2022. So I it's not very satisfying. I can't give you an answer of what we're going to do X, Y, and Z. Because again, I don't think that it's as simple based on everything that's changed right now.
But were you finished? I think you're you have 25 seconds, I'm sorry.
No, I'm okay. I'm finished. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, I think my colleague, Councilmember Volan, raised an interesting question and I wanted to ask Mr. Crowley, as an economic development expert, do you think that public transit can be an economic development tool? And how would you relate that to Bloomington?
I do, absolutely. I think unfortunately, one of the good things and challenges of my department is almost anything can be considered economic development issue, right? So, I mean, literally, right? So, which is why I sort of half joke that we get thrown a lot of projects because nobody else knows what to do with them. And so we so we tackle them, right? But absolutely, public transit is something that is related to economic development. Housing is something that's related to economic development. Parks are related to economic development. So you can kind of go through the list of every single city department and initiative. Potholes are economic development and you can kind of go through and you can make the case for all of that. And I'm not belittling the role that any one of those, for example, transit has, because I think in that particular case, that's really important in the world of workforce attraction, development, equity. So there's a lot of benefit to a really robust public transit system and 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 other means of transportation, micro mobility and pedestrian access. So there's a lot of value to all of that in the world of economic development. It doesn't necessarily mean that E S D should decide. It just means that we should have a seat at the table. We do have a seat at the table. There's a lot of collaboration that happens between departments and the city, a lot of really positive stuff. And and, you know, I think it's it's our job to advocate forcefully when we feel that something's really important, even if, you know, the corresponding department may not see it the same way. But I have I have never found a resistance to But I have I have never found a resistance to an idea. That that we have raised and been able to defend. And and I'm confident that, you know, if we decide to really pursue something that will have a corresponding department that is willing to help us support and implement it as necessary.
Thank you.
Further third round questions. Sorry, Council President Sims.
It's okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Crowley, I kind of want to get back into. The question we were talking about earlier. And I know this. May not be. The most educated way to look at this. But let's say. In my neighborhood, I compost, I use electric. Mower, electric tripers. And I mean, we do everything. I've got. Solar on my roof, but every neighbor around me uses two cycle. Equipment, you know, and burn fossil fuel. Now. Imposing that picture or painting that picture. That was the vein in which I was looking for a more regional approach with regard to Bloomington. And Monroe County or Bloomington specifically, working with our regional, maybe even contiguous county. Partners. In climate mitigation strategies. So I was simply wondering, where are we as far as communicating? And I don't know if that's your responsibility, but it is a city. Approach. And I think part of the administration. So are we talking with people in? In regional areas. Other county governments, other folks that have some authority with regard to to climate mitigation strategies. I maintain. That combined in power and funds and these sorts of things. Will help. You know, get to the goals that we're seeking. So that was my goal. I was just interested in the communication. What are we doing as far as establishing? These these communications, these collaborations, these discussions. All with the same goal of climate mitigation strategies. Is that?
Pretty clear. Yeah, I.
Does that make sense? Okay.
Thanks. And I agree with you. I think, you know, here in one minute or less. Bloomington's probably in the region, the sort of immediate region. We're probably more in the leadership position than we are in the in the following position. We it is a huge opportunity for us as Bloomington vis a vis. The county. To to collaborate. And as you say, you know, to the extent that we can combine resources, financial resources, all the better. We do sit on the, you know, Environmental Commission for the county. So we, I mean, there's interaction that's happening. But we but I think that we probably can. Really work together and help them sort of learn what we've tackled in the past and maybe ways to implement it. They can teach us. Other counties in the same way. But I think we would find on the whole, at least in the immediate region. That that with few exceptions, we probably are further ahead. And so so working with them to bring them along is something that an opportunity we should pursue. Having said that, there are. Private sector companies in the region that are way far ahead. Of some that we have locally, and that's worth leveraging as well.
Thank you.
Any further questions from council? Or Director Crowley? Okay. Councilmember Volan. I'll let you reclaim your time. So go ahead.
Appreciate that. I think I only have one more question. Mr. Crowley. With respect to the discussion about parking cash out. In your experience. Have you? Had you have direct evidence that? It will be a concern for employees who don't work in City Hall. If you had anybody actually complained. That parking cash out would be unfair to them, or is it simply something that you think might happen? Can you speak to that?
Nobody has come up to me and said that to me directly. So that the short answer is I don't have direct experience of that feedback. I do think that that back may be something that we need to go. Find out how real it is to your point, you know, is it just rumor or is it actual feedback? I think a quick and dirty sort of survey approach or sort of other way to collect that information would be really helpful. And if we discover frankly, that that it is not a real concern. That's a great discovery. If we find that it is, then I think we need to look at that more closely. And again, by we. You know, I would I would emphasize that in the end. Fight, you know, final implementation, design, decision making, all of that has to heavily, heavily involve human resources. Given the nature of how. This is perceived as a benefit.
Sure, of course. But. Just to be clear, so the the perception of the need to ask. Whether it would bother employees. Who don't work at City Hall. Is one that has come from. I mean, either you or Mr. Underwood or or other people who are thinking about perhaps Ms. Shaw in HR. Like, you think it might be a problem, the collective, the collective view, think it might be a problem. It's not that. There's no other reason to ask that question. Except that you think it might be.
Well, I so I would just clarify, when you asked me earlier, did I get direct feedback? I myself, if not, it could be that others have, and I'm just not. Aware of that. But I don't. And I think to your bigger point. A good survey doesn't lead the witness, right? So. You know, you need to ask the questions in a way that doesn't necessarily plant a new idea in someone's head to be pissed off if something like this were taking place. So you just need to kind of fear that out. It's not impossible to do well. But but it could very well be that 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 corresponding department heads or other members of staff have gotten more direct feedback on that point than I have.
Thank you.
Thank you. We've concluded our third round of questions. So let's go now to the public. For comments on the E S D Economic and Sustainable Development Budget for 2022. I see that we have a couple of hands of hands raised. Mr. Lucas.
Yes, I believe first up is Greg Alexander.
Mr. Alexander, you have two minutes.
Great, thanks. My name is Greg Alexander. You know, we really do have to be careful not to jump to conclusions because it truly is very difficult to hire people. But this transportation and man management position obviously belongs in planning and transportation. The administration fought to put it in the wrong department, and then the deputy mayor just said it's unfair to ask E S D about transportation and man management policy. Golly. It's like he agrees with me that it's the wrong department. Anyways, now that progress has stalled in that wrong department, we have a duty to be skeptical. So I think a good way for Director Crowley to allay this skepticism. Would be to simply use this forum right here, right now, and say what the new employee would be saying, that the city needs to do parking cash out today, or actually yesterday. Yet he was just given exactly that opportunity, and he said we should not be, quote, blindly following a plan that predated the pandemic, unquote. Yet that is exactly what we're doing. And at his direct personal advice, when we spend $30 million on new oversized parking garages that have both come online just this year. We're stuck on that course for decades to come. We will be paying for that rash plan. When it comes to massive public subsidy for cars, Director Crowley has shown that he doesn't hesitate. The first time the Fourth Street Garage replacement came before the council, this body voted it down against Director Crowley's advice, specifically saying that we should wait five years and find out if it still looks like a good idea. It's now three years later, and we can already tell the circumstances have changed, and it's a bad idea. We do know enough about what the next five years will bring. If we subsidize parking, then people will use cars more. Than if we price it at the market rate. Our budget is our priorities. It truly is that simple. To suggest otherwise is dissembling. Director Crowley is correct that we should not blindly follow any plan. We must boldly. Follow good plans. And now that E S D has taken responsibility for a good plan, all we see is hesitation. Bummer.
Mr. Lucas, do we have someone else or did they?
I am no longer. Not sure if they've changed their mind. I don't see any hands raised at the moment.
All right, we'll wait another minute or so. Anyone would like to make a public comment? Okay, well, seeing none. I don't see any. Do you? Let's return to council. For final comment. On the E S D budget for 2022, who would like to begin? Councilmember Flaherty.
Yes, thanks again, Mr. Crowley for the presentation, and thank you for answering our questions. I've I've got some pretty serious concerns about a lot of things I've heard in this budget presentation and through the questions. So I'm going to be a no for tonight, and I'll be following up on some of those. Thanks.
Thank you. Other comments? I don't see any hands. Okay, Councilmember Volan.
Before I begin to speak, am I echoing?
No, I don't hear you echoing.
Sorry, I'm having some audio problems. How about now?
No.
Your phone. Um. I'm. Quite unhappy. With the way this discussion turned out. I actually appreciated the answers that Mr. Crowley gave. And I was on my way to. Getting satisfactory answers. I mean, I don't agree with everything he's saying. I'm particularly disappointed to echo Mr. Flaherty's point that, and frankly, Mr. Alexander's well made points. That the administration is picking and choosing the parts of the plan that it. Wants to enforce. I ask questions about public transit because we have a climate action plan. Several of my colleagues are more than a little concerned about the climate. We should all be a little more concerned about the climate, or maybe those floods in June. Don't mean anything to anybody. Seven inches of rain in one hour. You know, the transportation is a key aspect of our climate plan. So, yes, my questions were all relevant, and I resent being interrupted to be told that. I'm, you know, out of my. Out of my area and asking these questions. It is relevant with the we did debate the location of. The TDM person, and it's in Mr. Crowley's department. So those questions are relevant for him. Now, Mr. Crowley knows, for example, that I am an advocate of the convention center. He would also recall that I'm not an advocate of additional parking for that convention center. I certainly am concerned about the way we're going to price parking, and it's a debate that we'll need to take later. But Mr. Alexander is right. Our budget is our priorities. And what I have not heard, what I've yet to hear from the administration collectively, for Mr. Crowley's department in particular, is. You know, is there a proactive effort? To do more. With, say, public transit. But we can't even get an answer on parking cash out between Mr. Crowley and Mr. Underwood. There's that all sorts of, well, we believe it's going to be a problem, even though they haven't even asked the question yet. And if we can't do parking cash out, why should we expect to see a shovel ready project sometimes, say, for? You know, the cable, the streetcar system I talked about more than a decade ago. You know, we can't get funding from the federal government if we don't have plans in place. And if we're not actively making plans to improve public transit in ways like that, that would be directly. Improving of economic development, then we're not going to get those projects. So I'm very disappointed. I support most of the work that E S D does, but I have to vote no tonight. Thank you.
Other council comment? Councilmember Rosenbarger.
Thank you. I appreciate the discussion tonight. Right now, I'm a no on this budget. I would say it's difficult for me to hear that we need to be flexible with our climate action plan goals and timeline. As we all know, we are in a climate crisis, and flexibility does not seem like an option to me. As Mr. Alexander touched on, I don't think we, when debating the trade parking garage, there was a wait and see approach. Although for that one, as he also touched on. I wish there had been because a few years later, no one is parking there, and it costs the taxpayers millions of dollars. I think the parking cash out, citywide composting. I think we're very much past due on implementing these programs. For both of them, cities across the country are doing these. And they are pretty straightforward and pretty simple. So I think for me, the idea that we have to research, we have to research, we have to research, like. I think sometimes we have to do it, and we have to try it, and it can be a pilot. It doesn't have to be perfect. But we need to just, we just need to start it. So not seeing that in the budget is very difficult for me to say, like, there's a lot of sustainability actions in this budget. Even if we're talking about economic development and buying local. Research shows that the slower a wallet passes a door, the more likely someone is to go in and buy something or sit down at a restaurant and order something. So not having any incentives for bike ped or transit and not having any disincentives for. Driving downtown and parking is also difficult for me because I think that's also actually against economic development in a time where. Folks are struggling, you know, business owners and restaurant owners are struggling because of the pandemic. So. For me, this just really misses the mark on the sustainability aspects of the department. And so again, I will be a no vote tonight.
Okay. Who would like to be next? Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, thank you. And I want to thank Mr. Crowley and his colleagues. They've had a. Very rough 18 months and have done. A lot of excellent work to try to keep our businesses afloat during the pandemic. But I also am troubled by this budget, in particular, the lack of. Details as to what goals in the climate action plan we're going to accomplish. In the coming year. Because we need to put dollar figures next to those, and we need to fund those. As my colleagues have said. It's a climate emergency. We. You know. Our house is on fire and underwater at the same time, and. We need to be steadfast in attaining the goals that. Are outlined in our sustainability plan and our climate action plan. So, given the lack of details and the lack of action on. Transportation, parking cash out, which Councilmember Volan and I have asked for repeatedly for years. I'm going to have to vote no at this point. Thank you.
Further council comment? We see any? Councilmember Smith, I think I see him.
Thank you. I'm somewhat troubled by the lack of detail as well. And I I think. Mr. Crowley and his department have done a fantastic job. In the last year and a half, last two years. But I would like to. Know more specifics about. Some of the. What the expenditures in the budget are going to be for and and that they would be more targeted towards some of. What my colleagues are advocating for. And so I'm going to be a no tonight as well. Thank you.
Other comments? I don't see any. I'll take my. My turn. Mr. Crowley, I think you're serious about climate change. I think that you're working steadfastly for that goal. I understand my colleagues, if they're. They don't, they're concerned about parking cash out, for instance. I think that you answered that. That's a complex issue that needs to be. Essentially addressed with city employees in mind, many of whom. Commute in from the county or even further, further away. And so I think that's a fair answer, and I think you'll be doing that. I appreciate your efforts, particularly for administering funds this past year. This has been very trying, and. Your department especially was tasked with that, and it helped a lot of businesses to remain afloat. So. I very much appreciate that. I also appreciate your efforts toward a local food economy. Which are really starting to take off, and. I think that could be an amazing. Economic development. Perspective. perspective. I I think that we've got, I mean, you you are in an unfortunate position where economic and sustainable development takes out, takes so much of our concerns in the city. And that was, in in part, my fault back almost 20 years ago, when we were discussing where to place the focus of sustainability. And it seemed to be best placed within economic development, where it was totally absent before. So it's an amazing thing to juggle because you've got so much going on, whether it's arts or technological tech company development, or in tech park, or local food economy, or composting, and so forth. So I commend your work. I will be supporting your budget this evening. And unless there are any, any other comments, Councilmember Flaherty, did you have another comment?
I did have a brief one, and since I just spoke for 30 seconds or so initially, I figured I'd use a little more of the time to follow up on something you just said, Councilmember Rallo. I don't think it was a bad decision to put sustainability in in economics, sustainable development, when the position was developed. But I think the state of the climate crisis in 2021 is wildly different than it was in 2006. And I was thinking this earlier, and I was going to follow up. But I'll just say it now, I I'm going to go ahead and renew the call for a climate level, climate, sorry, director level, climate, director position. I think I bungled all of that, director level, cabinet level position overseeing climate change and climate programming. Mr. Crowley mentioned how complicated it is, that this touches on so many different departments, so many different public and private stakeholders in our city, in our county, in our state. All of that's correct, and it's incredibly difficult. And I've had, you know, a lot of conversations with Lauren Clemens, our Assistant Director for Sustainability, who's kind of tasked with shepherding this plan. And my impression is that there's real capacity issues. We are not going to meet this goal, and and we're not going to implement this plan. There are 266 actions in that plan to implement in an eight-year timeline to initiate. That is, that is a lot. They are complicated, a lot of them. And and we need more capacity. We need more staff, at least another staff person. But I think it makes sense, given the diverse and overarching nature of it, for it to be a director level position that that is perhaps in the office of the mayor. So I'm going to go ahead and start the call for that again and be following up on that point. Thank you.
That's an intriguing proposition. So thanks for your comment. Any other comments? Okay, I guess we're taking second round comments. Councilmember Repeat Mons Smith.
Um, I would like to second what Councilmember Flaherty said. And actually, I I, if I remember correctly, Councilmember Rallo and I both urged Mayor Cruzan at the time to create a sustainability position that was separate and reported directly to the mayor. And so I think we were kind of, we were forward-thinking in that, in that respect. And I think, as Councilmember Flaherty has said, it has only become more important since then that we have a focus on climate action. And so I think, I believe last year, we talked about the importance of this position as well. And I I think we should, I I would like to reiterate that this should be a cabinet level position. Not that I have any lack of respect for for Mr. Crowley. I think he is dedicated to the issue. I think he's a professional and has done a very good job. But that this is just an area that is of such vital importance that we really must elevate that position and have more staff time dedicated to this topic. Thank you.
Thank you. Are we, have we exhausted comments? Yes, Councilmember Scambleri.
Yes, thank you. And thank you to my colleagues. This has been really helpful for me and really muddling for me at the same time in thinking about this issue. I'm going to abstain tonight, and here's why. There is a lot that this department is doing. I think Mr. Crowley rightly observed that E S D seems to exist at the intersection of virtually every project. At this stage of budget, to me, I haven't voted no on any budgets, in part because I think this is an opportunity for me to either express support for a budget or to say I have more questions. And that's when I tend to abstain. So that is just the approach I take, and I offer that. I'm going to abstain tonight and applaud the amazing work that this office has done in the last year in responding to a crisis, and acknowledge that I have colleagues who have a lot of questions. So that's just my thinking on this evening. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Councilmember Volin, did I see your hand up?
You did. Yes. I want to say three things. First of all, with all due respect, Mr. Chair, unlike the other members who've spoken, you addressed Mr. Crowley directly, making the issue more personal. This, as Councilmember Puma Smith said, it's not about Mr. Crowley, who does good work. If anything, I would argue that E S D is under-resourced for the mandate that it has either set for itself, the present and past administrations have set for it, and that that's one reason why it's unable to adequately answer questions about, say, the climate action plan for the, to the satisfaction of some of our colleagues. So first of all, I would ask that, you know, we be careful to try to address the issue and not directly address people. Secondly, Mr. Rallo, as, you know, you're the chair of the meeting here, but I would point out that it was your extraordinary action in 2019 that brought the the tear-down and rebuild of the Fourth Street Garage to the fore. Had you not acted, it it, we would have repaired it, and we perhaps might not be sitting on a white elephant at 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 this time. So I think it's relevant to the comments that you have about the adequacy or lack thereof of the the department's performances presented. Finally, and I've think I've already forgotten the third point I wanted to make, but you know, the I've I lost my third point. It was a good one, and I can't think of it. I appreciate the comments that I've heard from everybody else. And I would urge us all to to try to remember that this is, this not and shouldn't be about, I mean, however much we may esteem individuals, we're trying to debate issues here. And, you know, if if there's, if the appropriate time to discuss jurisdiction of a given department was on Monday night, I wish I had known that on Monday night. I'm going to keep asking questions about the relevance of what you know, what I, what activity should be in what department, as I see fit. Thank you.
Okay, further comments, since I'm allowing additional comments on additional comments? Okay, then I guess I'll call for a recommendation.
Recommend you pass. Second.
Okay, I'll call the role as I see people arbitrarily on the screen. Councilmember Volin.
No.
Councilmember Scambleri.
Abstain.
Councilmember Flaherty.
No.
Councilmember Puma Smith.
No.
Councilmember Smith.
No.
Councilmember Rosenberg.
No.
Councilmember Sandberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Sims.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So that's three yes, five no, and one abstention. Mr. Crowley, thank you so much for this lengthy presentation and and debate. I appreciate your your thorough presentation.
Thank you very much. A good evening, everyone.
Thank you. Okay.